Nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Before we get into our regular meeting, I want to first recognize some visitors we have with us today. We're so honored. There you are in the front row. If you would please stand, all the members of the My City Academy. We're so grateful to have you here. I know that we have a total of, we were expecting eight participants. We're so glad that you're all here. You've dedicated your time to meet once a week for six weeks, we understand. And there's a young man, I don't know if he's present yet, there, please, there you are. Son of one of the participants, and you took an interest. He's your son, very good. There is a resemblance there. Well, accompanying your mother through the course. And you will also be receiving a certificate of completion. So bravo for you as well. So, and I understand that tonight you're going upstairs for some more meetings. And we want to thank Franciscan Beltran for organizing this. And Commissioner Krista Yocum, I know you're here, where are you? Please stand up and be recognized. Thank you, Commissioner. And we hope that you will be able to join us here for a few minutes. I understand that that might be the case. So, welcome to the Lincoln City Council very much. Okay, thank you. Please have a seat, and we hope you enjoy your time with us and the rest of the community.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I could just have a moment. I had a great opportunity to visit, spend some time with the My City Academy last week. And I just wanted to tell the young man who is the first high school age or the youth aged graduate of My City Academy, congratulations, Messi made it happen.
Very good, thank you, Councilwoman Washington. Any other comments from our council members about My City Academy? Thank you for joining us this evening. And more fun on the way. Most of you probably already know, but this is Councilwoman Jane Raybold's last city council meeting of her career. And so, we're going to take some time, just a few minutes, to honor Councilwoman Raybold. And she has been humbly and honorably elected to the Nebraska State Legislature. And we're so proud of that Senator-elect Raybold. And we will memorize your phone number over there. And do know that we'll be calling you a lot. And we know that you will support local issues, local control issues. And, okay, I'll stop right there, but we do have our list. And we're just so proud of you, Councilwoman. And I have just a few things I'm going to say, and we have an outgoing plaque for you. And then I'm going to let my colleagues also send you off with some good cheer. But Jane, thank you for your immeasurable service. You've been on the city council for eight years, four years as a county commissioner. You were a candidate and a strong one for the United States Senate. You ran for lieutenant governor. Your success as a senator-elect, Jane, we know is going to be long remembered. And we're just so proud of you, we're so proud to have worked for you, with you. Sometimes it felt like we worked for you. Because of your many accomplishments, but you were always so prepared, you were always so professional. We really appreciate your leadership. I know I did as a new councilperson. You walked me through those first agendas and showed us the ropes. So, we appreciate your leadership, your tenacity in a good way, and your ability to always be able to have one more thing to say. So, we appreciate that as well. So, if you would come and join me behind this dais, we have a token of our appreciation. So, Councilwoman, would you like to say a few words before we turn it over to our colleagues?
Well, I-
Operative word is few. No, we're kidding.
Not a problem, not a problem. Just thank you all so much. I'd like to thank my colleagues. It's been really very trying times, certainly during COVID. But I really appreciate the hard work that we all did. And we stood fast together. And we worked hard together to make sure that we kept our city and all the wonderful people in our city safer. So, I'm very appreciative of that and the work that you'll continue to do to keep our city moving forward. I have total confidence in this crew of being capable and getting many, many things done that benefit so many in our community. And it was an honor to serve with each and every one of you. And it's a humbling experience to be part of public service. And I think that's what motivated me to keep working and going on to the state legislature, where I hope to continue to work with my colleagues because I'm going to count on you for a lot of important information that you have to keep funneling to us so that we can get a lot of great things done for our city. So, I want to thank everyone out there for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Councilwoman and Senator-elect. Thank you so much.
This is really pretty.
Any other colleagues want to say? Yes, Councilwoman Washington.
Councilwoman Raybold, I just want to say thank you for encouraging me to step up and serve. And it has been an honor to do so. And I would not have probably made that step without your encouragement. And thank you for everything you've taught me as I have learned the ropes on city council. Good luck.
Thank you.
Councilwoman McGinnis.
Yeah, Councilwoman Raybold, thank you so much for everything you've done, especially for me. And I'll say selfishly that I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot of how to be a legislator and also how to work with people. That we didn't always agree. And I just, I thought it was very great that we were able to work so well together, maybe on different sides of the issue. But it was, it was exciting to see how that can work in this, in this position. So, thank you for giving me a little faith that we can all work together.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, thank you so much for your service.
Well, thank you all, and let's get back to business.
Yes, she is a hardworking Councilwoman and Senator-elect. All right, on to the meeting. In accordance with L.B. eight ninety-eight, please be advised that a copy of the Opens Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
My glad to lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per person, per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for our city council meeting on Monday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, is a reminder, due to the Christmas and New Year's holidays, city council will not meet on Monday, December twenty-sixth, and also January second of twenty twenty-three. Next item on our agenda would be our consent agenda, Sections one and Sections two.
Is there anyone present that would like to speak on these items?
Good evening, councilmembers. I am Kim Morrow, Chief Sustainability Officer, and I'm here on behalf of the mayor's office. The mayor proposes three new nominees and one existing reappointment for three-year terms on the LES board. The nominees are Dr. Martha Durr, Nebraska State Climatologist, Kate Bowles, Nebraska State Director of USDA Rural Development, Eric Schaefer, President of Tullusys, and Karen Griffin, retired Vice President, Olson Associates, is a reappointment. With this slate of nominees, the administration wishes to support the work of LES with expertise surrounding the intersection of climate change and energy, a strong working knowledge of local, state and federal governmental systems, and an innovative large business mindset. I'd like to call up our first nominee, Dr. Martha Durr. She has been at UNL since two thousand nine and has served as our state climatologist since twenty sixteen. Martha?
Thank you, Kim. Good evening, everybody. I've been a resident of the city of Lincoln for thirteen years, raising my family here. I look forward to the opportunity to serve in this capacity and feel that I could lend my experience and expertise in this role. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. and comments?
Thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
Thanks for being here.
Our second nominee is Kate Bowles. She has served as a state senator, a federal administrator, and a city employee. And in her current role at the USDA, she has learned a great deal about energy policy recently. Kate?
Thank you. I look forward to using my previous legislative and fiscal oversight experience in this new role. My background in social work and consumer advocacy, I think, also serves me well in this position. Finally, I want to assure you that I have followed the appropriate ethics rules. I will submit the appropriate forms. And I will work as an independent individual on a voluntary basis, not related to my service in the administration, but will do my best to serve the citizens and constituents of LES.
Thank you, Senator Bowles, for being here. Are there questions for Senator Bowles? No questions, all right. Once a senator, always a senator. I'm going to bring that back if it's the last thing I do.
And our third nominee, Eric Schaefer, has served in his family-owned business for thirty-three years. He's been instrumental in helping Tullusys to develop clean energy resources. And he has worked closely with LES over many years in doing so. Eric?
Yeah, we've felt like LES has supported all of our efforts for our thirty-five years in business. We feel like any of our sustainability efforts, they've been as big of a driver of those as we have. And really, in our company, we say, "We drink the LES Kool-Aid." So, I'm just excited for this opportunity to continue working with them.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Schaefer? All right, all right. Thank you for being here.
And as I mentioned, our final nominee, Karen Griffin, is simply a reappointment to a three-year term. Thank you very much.
Oh, Kim, can I have a question for you? And it's not, probably I just wasn't prepared. So, is it, so she's not listed on the agenda. Is that, is there a reason Karen Griffin's? Or is it?
First reading.
Oh, okay, thank you. Is she?
Eight B.
Very good. Okay. We see it there. Thank you very much. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Kim. All right. Anyone else present that would like to speak on these items?
Good evening, members of the city council. My name's Ken Winston. I'm appearing on behalf of the Nebraska C.R. Club and Nebraska Interfaith Power and Light. My address is thirteen twenty-seven H Street, Suite three hundred, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five oh eight. We're here in support of the three nominees and the reappointment of Karen Griffin. These nominees will help LES create policies to advance Lincoln's economic growth and well-being. Lincoln Electric System has shown great leadership in many areas which have benefited this community. A big part of that is the fact that they have, have dedicated in visionary board members. And I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the things that are, that are good for the community, in particular for the businesses of this community. First of all, LES has some of the lowest rates in, in the area. Of course, Councilwoman Ward, you're well aware of, of these attributes. And good businesses recognize that low electric rates, how that benefits the bottom line. Secondly, great record for reliability. Did you know that the average in the United States for an outage is, is two hours, one hundred and twenty minutes? The average for the Lincoln Electric System is seventeen minutes. So, so that's a great record for reliability. There's also significant investment in renewable energy. Approximately forty-eight, forty-eight percent of their retail sales are from, are from renewable sources. And many cutting-edge businesses require renewable energy in determining where to locate, such as Google, Microsoft, Apple, Facebook, I could go on. In addition, renewable energy investments ensure that we continue to have low rates. If, as you may have noticed, the cost of fossil fuels have gone up a lot in the last year. And unlike, on the other hand, the cost of renewable energy stays the same because of the fact that there's no fuel cost. So, I'm going to speak a little bit in support of all three, of the three candidates who are being nominated today. First of all, in support of Senator, former Senator Bowles. She was a member of the Appropriations Committee, so she knows about how the funds, where the money comes from, and how to, how to make it happen in the state. She's also an economic development expert. She can help LES create policies that help businesses grow and prosper. But she also has a, has demonstrated a desire to make sure that those who lack resources are cared for. Then I'm going to speak a little bit more about Martha Durr, who's the state climate officer. She's a specialist in climate resiliency and weather issues. And I'm going to quote from, from something about the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. For more than a decade, the U.S. Chamber of Commerce has asserted that climate, that the climate is changing, that humans are contributing to these changes, and that inaction is not an option. Martha has the skills and knowledge to help LES develop strategies and policies to address the impacts of climate change, particularly extreme weather. Martha is both a scientist and a community resource. She has made numerous presentations about the dangers of climate change and the opportunities that may arise from it to many organizations and policymakers across the state. She would be a tremendous asset on the LES board. And although I do not know Mr. Schaefer, I am familiar with the businesses that, that he represents, and I'm confident that he would also be a good representative on the LES board. So, I would, we would encourage, although there is some opposition, we believe that is not factually based. And we believe that all three of these candidates would be good members of the LES board and encourage you to vote for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. Are there questions or comments for Ken?
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Anyone else present that would like to testify? Mr. McDonald.
Hi. My name's Edison McDonald. I am representing G.C. Revolt here today. We are a renewable energy developer here in Nebraska. My address is nine oh nine West Tenth Street, Hickman, Nebraska. And I just wanted to make sure that we talked about a few questions that I think are really important for LES board members. Because this is the only time we really get to talk about the qualifications around being an LES board member. So, some of the, the questions that we, we wonder about is, will they support removing red tape for businesses like the net metering cap from twenty-five kilowatts to a hundred kilowatts like OPPD has done? This has been a great opportunity to help go and continue to grow both business and renewable energy. Will they focus on better infrastructure development around renewable energy projects and really help to grow our infrastructure? Will they support actions to help ensure that businesses have the proper supports to address the negative impacts of climate change? Will they focus on proactive leadership to bring more community members into the process, and especially from minority communities that may not necessarily have the same engagement? And will they focus on improving infrastructure to allow access for homeowners to develop their own energy? I hope that these are the questions that y'all will be considering as you reflect on these candidates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Anyone else present that would like to testify on these items? Anyone else present? Items one through G. Okay. If not, saying none, Madam Clerk, could you please move us on?
We can now vote on these items. Item one A is appointing Dr. Martha Durr to the Lincoln Electric System Administrative Board for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded by Becky S. Further discussion? Councilman McGinnis?
Yes. Since many of you know, it was my comments in the paper earlier. But I'd like to just say a few other things. That my vote against these nominees is nothing personally against these nominees. It's more of a vote against using the LAS board as a political activist group. It is something I feel very strong about. I've lived here in Lincoln all my life. I've been here sixty-five years. I've watched a great, great many, actually only two or three administrators go through LES and do a great job. We've got the cheapest energy. We've got the most reliable energy. We've had this program going so far, so fast, that was working really well. One thing that I learned past several years as a city council member and as Lincoln Public School Board of Education is we need to hear from all sides of an issue, from different views. Even on the school board, we developed a, a program called All Means All. And that was bring everybody into the, into the mix. Make sure you hear from everybody. And when we take time to hear all sides, we seem to work a lot better together. We grow as a city when we do this. And I believe this is not happening with, happening now with the current philosophy for these appointments. There's an appearance of, also disagree with us and we'll replace you. It seems something that has gone on. And it's how do we be viewed as a city? Sometimes it makes me wonder. I'd say the people of Lincoln would like to respond to this also. Board members are responsible for the control, management, property, personnel, which, there are over hundreds of personnel that will be working underneath this appointed board. So, I think the purpose of the board is straightforward. It's to be an administrative board for large business. Instead, it's become a political entity for a certain philosophy. We need electricity in our community, heat and cool our homes, power our appliances, feed our families, provide power for our manufacturing for businesses, for light and children. The LAS board and our electricity is not something that should be used for political gains or agendas. I believe that it is important for the people of Lincoln to understand what has been happening with our LAS board. So, that's why I will be voting no. And it's important for the community to be informed and understand and why I plan to vote against these nominations. I believe Lincoln is to be, is a very inclusive community. And we must stay by not, we must start by de-politicizing appointments to the LAS board. I know many of these nominees, I want them to know that this is not personal, and they're excellent people and probably very qualified. But this is a bigger issue in making the community members aware of what is happening with these appointments. I believe we need to get back to the longstanding practice of welcoming members of the LAS board who have diverse backgrounds, personally, professionally, and politically. By having a different thought process and evaluation of issues facing the LAS board, we could become a more inclusive and welcoming city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McGinnis. Any other comments from Council, Councilwoman Raybold?
You know, I want to thank Councilmember McGinnis. I know sometimes it's really hard to say these words and not make them sound political. I think we all agree, we, we appreciate diversity. We appreciate the difference of opinion, and I think it's important that we embrace that. Having said that, I feel a hundred percent confident that the, the candidates that are before us will bring their many, many talents to the table because we all recognize how essential public power is to the people that we serve. We have to deliver on that commitment of affordability and reliability, with also keeping a mind to the future needs of our community, our state, and our country, and how to deliver on that commitment. So, I'm, I'm confident the people that are before us today will, are up to the job and will do exceedingly well in delivering on that commitment on affordability and reliability.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Earlier in the testimony, Ken Winston talked about the qualifications of everyone. But what he really started with was to recognize that this is the opportunity to really talk about the LAS board. We don't get very many opportunities. And so, I wanted to use my opportunity. And so I wanted to use my opportunity to say thank you to the outgoing board members who have served very well in that capacity. I'd like to say thank you to Lain Supp, Kim Morrow, and Danae Kalkowski. Thank you very much for your service to our community.
Anyone else on item 1A? We will be taking these individually, so we can have comments on each one if you would like, so. All right. Okay. Seeing no further comments on, I would just like to say, I do not know Dr. Durr, but like my colleagues, I, like Councilman McGinnis and Ray Boldt, I am, and I'm concerned a bit about the philosophy of the administration when it comes to the appointments. I'm most troubled by, and we'll get to item 1C, my dear friend, Senator Bowles, I've never been in a position till now to have to consider voting against a good friend who's more than capable, but the process in this case was tremendously flawed. And as Chair of the Council, I was the last one to know that my other good friend that I served on the LAS Board with and went on the Board with, Danae Kalkowski, who is also beyond qualified, had not been reappointed, and I heard that on the streets of Lincoln. And so that's where my dilemma began, and so I feel like I'm boxed in on my vote to not support these nominees. And I too think that good government amounts to listening to people that don't always agree with us, and I think we need that balance in our, whether it's boards and commissions or people we work with, that people that support us in our day-to-day work or in our day-to-day lives. It's that depth of diversity can be defined in many ways. And so I was saddened to hear that Danae had not been reappointed. She's professional, she's prepared, she serves this community well, she had no agenda, and I was shocked when I was told again by someone outside of city government that she had not been reappointed, and she was Chair of the LAS Board. So you can imagine my dismay and my shock as Chair of the Lincoln City Council to find out about it in that way. So that began my quest to find out what was happening with the LAS Board appointment. So we'll, can discuss more as we go to each appointment. And having no more discussion from the Council on item 1A, would you please call the vote, Madam Clerk?
Ray Boldt?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Motion carried, 5-2. Item 1B, appointing Eric Schaefer to the Lincoln Electric System Administrative Board for a term to expire December 31st, 2025, introduced by Ray Boldt.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Any further discussion? Counsel, any further discussion? Again, I would just say, Mr. Schaefer, you're more than qualified, know your family, and everybody loves your family business. Again, it's on principle, it's not personal. We need to look at our processes. I was, Boards and Commissions aid to the Governor of Nebraska, Ben Nelson, so I think I know a little bit about, I hope I've known how the processes can work a lot better, so that we don't box in those of us that have to approve appointments, to not support our friends and associates that we know will do a good job, and support people that should not be thrown off boards, for lack of a better word, who are doing a tremendous job. And thank you, Danae, again, for that. So I just want you to understand, Mr. Schaefer, not against you, so. Any other comments, Counsel? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Ray Boldt?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Motion carried, 5-2. Item 1C is appointing Kate Bowles to the Lincoln Electric System Administrative Board for a term to expire December 31st, 2025, introduced by Ray Boldt.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Bowers. Any further discussion? Councilman Bowers?
I would just like to, opportunity to speak to the appointment for Kate Bowles. I first met Kate about 10 years ago, when she took the time to meet me as a random social worker in northeast Lincoln. And as I sat down and spoke with her, I immediately looked up to her. I looked up to her as a social worker, a policymaker, and a strong leader, and as someone that has impacted my work, someone whose style that I have attempted to mimic as a way to do business, build coalitions, and build relationships, and someone that I strove to be more like as a social worker, myself, as a policymaker, myself, and as a leader, myself. I'd like to read a short quote of Senator Bowles from a few years back that was written in the Journal Star. "So much of public service is choosing your words and choosing your battles. I want to leave you with a sincere request. Don't worship the false gods of politics. Don't sacrifice at the altar of leverage. And don't tell yourself that the ends justify the means, and then ask yourself for forgiveness. We've seen too much of this, we've gone too far. Because your work matters. It matters to every school kid, every hospital patient, every truck driver, and every basketball coach. It matters to every farm, village, city, and suburb. Please believe that when you're striving in the name of service, not political gain, when your work is in the name of others and not your own ego, when your efforts are to make the lives of your constituents better, your efforts matter, and they are not in vain. These are more than just words. These are actions that I've seen Senator Bowles and actions that she has walked for the over decade that I've known her, the over decade that I've learned from her, and the over decade that I've worked with her, and they're part of the reasons why I respect and admire Kate. Kate Bowles is an amazing public servant, a sharp policy expert, and a dedicated community leader, and why I am voting in support of Kate Bowles." Thank you, Kate.
Thank you, Councilman Bowers. Any other discussion? Again, I would just say, Senator Bowles, I'm glad we had the opportunity to speak today. I'm sorry that we both put in this position to not support one another as we'd like to or as we have in the past, and it's very difficult. As Councilwoman Ray Boldt said earlier, sometimes it's, this is hard, these are really hard votes, and I just want to thank you for your service, you've only yet begun, to do really wonderful things for our city, our county, and our state. So thank you, Senator Bowles, and thank you for understanding. All right. Without seeing any other further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Ray Boldt?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Motion carried, 5-2.
All right. We can move on.
Item 1D is reappointing Karen Nalo to the Nebraska Capital and Environs Commission for a term to expire January 9th, 2026, introduced by McGinnis.
Introduced by McGinnis.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ray Boldt?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1E is approving appropriations, the amount of $265,000 from the operation of Keno Lottery Funds for various human services, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Ray Boldt?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Items 2A through 2C is introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Ray Boldt?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall now move on to our public hearing liquor resolution, Section 4. Those that are giving testimony are asked to come forward, and I will raise, excuse me, those that are coming to give testimony are going to be asked to come forward. Some of those will may need to be sworn in, and raise your right hand, and then we can swear again for the oath. I will call items 4A and 4B together. 4A, Application of Purple Plate Hospitality LLC, doing business as Leela Mae's Southern Kitchen and Lounge for a Class C liquor license located at 2110 Windthrup Road, and the related manager application of Tramisha M. Cruz. Please raise your right hand.
Yes.
Do you saw me swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about your business and the need for the change in your license or the application?
So what we have is a southern, like a restaurant and lounge. What we want to do is eventually we want to start serving alcohol with our meals, and then on Fridays and Saturdays, stay open a little later for people in the neighborhood who want to come and have a cocktail. And we also want to start serving brunch and have cocktails during brunch hour as well.
Sounds like we have some interested people up here.
If you haven't been, you should come. We try to offer a little bit of a different, more welcoming, you know, environment, atmosphere, a little bit of southern in the Midwest.
Uh huh. Okay. Very good. Any questions for our applicants?
Yes, Councilwoman Ray Boldt?
I just want to know, what is your signature dish? What is your specialty that you make? To make us all hungry up here.
Our signature dish is the Nashville hot chicken.
And it's delicious.
And your wings?
Yes.
I'm sorry, your wings?
Thank you. But we do get a lot of compliments on our greens and our wings. Our wings, we take and soak them, I'm gonna tell you my secret, we soak them in buttermilk for 45 minutes, and sometimes overnight, just so they can have that moisture on the inside.
Thank you.
For doing that to us.
What are your hours of operation? Are you open?
How late are you open?
Yeah. So we're open Tuesday through Saturday, from 12 noon till 10:00 p.m. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you very much for being here. All right.
I'll be calling items 4C and 4D together. Application of RC's Boxing Productions, Inc., doing business RC's Boxing Productions for a Class I liquor license located at 1555 Yolanda Avenue, and the related manager application of Tom Rsiaga. Do you saw me swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Do I start?
Just tell us a little bit about your business.
My name's Tina Rsiaga, at 1555 Yolanda Avenue. We bought the Champions Fund Center, as y'all know it to be, and we have a nonprofit, Southside Boxing, and so we want to do pro-am boxing shows, maybe, you know, five to six events per year. So when we do the shows, we've done them before at the Icebox and whatnot, but we'll have our own facility where we can facilitate these shows and be able to provide beverages, if you will, during the boxing matches.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Rsiaga? Councilwoman Washington?
Hi, Ms. Rsiaga. Will it be yourself or your husband who will be the manager on the liquor license?
We're both going to take the testing, if you will, and both be a part of it.
Okay. And do you expect any, do you expect to go before the state for a show cause hearing?
I'm sorry?
Do you expect to go before the state for a show cause hearing?
A show? I haven't, I'll have to look into that.
All right. Well, the very best to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Tina, for being here.
I'll be calling items 4E and 4F together. Application of Acme Widget Company LLC, doing business at Pizano's for a Class I liquor license located at 2740 South Street, and the related manager application of Jeffrey M. Beatty. Do you saw me swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name's Jeff Beatty. I'm the general manager at Pizano's, 2740 South Street, and we're applying for a Class I liquor license. We've recently renovated the restaurant. The dining room has been closed since 2019. It's now been open for a little over a month. We've added a bar to the restaurant, pending this application, of course. So we're looking to, we've got about 40 seats in the restaurant, and about four bar stools, so it's a very small aspect of thing, but we're looking to be able to sell beer, wine, and a few mixed drinks to our customers while they enjoy some food. So that's the reason that we're here before you today.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Councilman Shob.
Acme Widget Company?
Yeah, that, we have a-
I just couldn't let, yeah.
I don't disagree. It's interesting when I get, when I, people ask the paycheck. So we've got a group, an ownership group, that, that was the name that they chose before I came on as the general manager, so.
Like Roadrunner?
Yes. I'm trying not to do the Roadrunner side here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I'll be calling item 4G and 4H together. Application of Avenue 6113 LLC, doing business Arnold's for a Class C liquor license located at 6113 Havlock Avenue, and the related manager application of Jenny M. Quickie.
Hello.
Hello. Please raise your right hand. Do you saw me swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about your application and your business?
Jason just bought it, and so-
Yes, so Arnold's has been open since 1945, and I own J-Tech Construction and J-Tech Solar on Havlock Avenue, along with other properties, and it just made sense for me to get in there and, you know, use my business expertise. Also, my dad's a pro shuffleboard player, and I've been going in there for a long time, picking him up and whatnot, so, yeah. Not going to change anything but open Sunday and a, a little bit earlier in the day, so otherwise, same great place.
No name change?
No name change.
No one could find it, you know?
Kind of paid too much for the name to be changed, you know? It's one of those things.
Understood.
1945.
Right. Right branding. Correct. Any questions for our applicants at all? Yes, Councilman Bowers?
I love Arnold's.
Just keep coming.
I'm a Havlock guy, so. Will there still be, will there still be Saturday morning safety meetings?
100%. They're growing, actually, I think.
I could see you have a few people that are familiar with.
It's pretty iconic, I think. I'm pretty lucky to be able to try to fill these shoes.
It's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
All right. Okay. We can move on.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may?
Please.
If I may, seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to move approval of items four A through four H.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Raybold?
I just probably have a question. So the individuals that had the DUIs on their record, is it automatic for them to have a show cause hearing? If we approve them this evening?
Investigator Parker will hopefully answer our questions.
Thank you, investigator Parker. A number of the applicant, well, two of the applicants have had DUIs on their record. Is it customary for, if we approve it, we'll go to the state for a show cause hearing?
Not necessarily. Scott Parker, Lincoln Police Department, five seventy-five South Tenth Street. Not necessarily. There is one application that it was still being tabulated just because the DUIs are so old. They operate off of a point system, and as years go by, some of the points go away, so. That is yet to be determined on all of them who have the DUI issue.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Thank you, investigator, very much. All right, we can move on.
We cannot vote on these items? Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. That concludes section four of our agenda. We shall now move into section five, public hearing resolutions. Item five A, Comprehensive Plan Conformance two-two-zero-two-one. Application of the City of Lincoln Urban Development Department to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster Comprehensive Plan. A proposed amendment to the South Folsom Redevelopment Plan to modify the subphases of the Phase One projects in the Foxtail Meadows Redevelopment Project on project property generally located at the east side of South Folsom Street and south of West Pioneer's Boulevard.
Good evening, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, five-five-five South Tenth Street. This is one of many items that will have either Hallie or myself up at the microphone. This item is just an amendment to a previous plan amendment. I'll read into the record. We also have the developer and their attorney here that can kind of walk through some of the particulars of this. But in the letter that we sent to David Carey, we wrote that this is the First Amendment to the South Folsom Redevelopment Plan. The original redevelopment plan was approved by the Lincoln City Council on August eighth, 2022 via Resolution A ninety-three four seven three. The amendment modifies the subphases of the Foxtail Meadow Redevelopment Projects by adjusting the size and type, number of bedrooms, of the thirty-five affordable townhomes in Sub Phase One B. Restructuring Sub Phase One C from twenty-nine small lot affordable single-family detached units to twenty-one affordable units, and adding a new Sub Phase One D, including fifty-three attached and detached rental units with a mix of affordable and workforce housing. The amendment results in a net increase of forty-five housing units for a total of two hundred and forty, up from a hundred and ninety-five, and a corresponding increase in tax increment financing of six hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, from the original estimated four point two-five-eight-eight-six-three to four point eight-nine-four-two-eight-six. The original Sub Phase One A is unchanged at a hundred and thirty-one affordable multifamily units. And just like most of the projects for urban development, this is one aspect of multiple agreements that will be brought before this body, and there will be, point in fact, there will be agreements that will be brought to this body in January. I'll stop there and answer any questions, and I know that the developer here would like to have a word as well, too.
Thank you, Director Marvin. Questions?
My man.
Not yet, okay, very good.
Madam Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is two-three-three South Thirteenth, Suite nineteen hundred, appearing before you today on behalf of Sofu Housing. Ironically, when we were here in August, when the City Council approved the redevelopment agreement, almost exactly the same week, we received an additional grant from the Department of Economic Development for additional affordable housing, which we wanted to include in Phase One C. And we determined, notwithstanding the fact that the council just, just had adopted the redevelopment plan for Foxtail Meadows, we decided it would be worth it, come back and amend the plan to deal with that issue. And also, we ran into some wetlands issues that we did not anticipate when we were doing the site planning process. And so we had to change and reconfigure where the parcels and the phases were going on our, on our particular parcel of real estate. So in the redevelopment plan covers approximately fifty-four acres. We have the Foxtail Meadows subdivision that is being, working its way through the land development process in the City of Lincoln, and this is certainly one component of it. Director Marvin is correct. Phase One A will remain a hundred and thirty-one dwelling units. We have a tax exempt bond authorized by the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority using the four percent tax credits that will hopefully start construction in the spring. Phase One B will remain approximately the same, thirty-five units. That's using the nine percent low-income housing tax credits, and that will start in the spring, and hopefully those projects will be completed sometime in the spring of 2024. We, we restricted Phase One C slightly to deal with the affordable housing, homeownership opportunities that are really afforded by the grant from the Department of Economic Development through the trust fund program. And then, because it is a mixed income, mixed-use development, we wanted to add Phase One D while we're at it, to add the fifty-three units, so we could sprinkle affordable, single-family homes and rental properties within the project. The other thing I would add is that Director Marvin is correct. We have a variety of agreements working their way through the process. Three weeks from today, we will have a redevelopment agreement in front of you, and also an amendment to the annexation agreement, because all this area has been annexed into the City of Lincoln. We had to amend the re, the annexation agreement to deal with the cost and the method of payment for the intersection improvements that are going to be serving this neighborhood. So we're, from my perspective and the legal perspective, we're reaching the finish line. Of course, my client doesn't share that until construction is completed, but that's where we are. And again, it's another, you know, approximately a hundred and eighty dwelling units that will be being brought online for the City of Lincoln. So we're excited about this concept. It is new. It's an affordable subdivision that we really haven't done, but it is mixed income because of the design of the project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Also with me today is Principal of Hoppy Development, developer of the property, Fred Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Houston. Questions from the council? Comments, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to testify? Mr. Hoppy?
I endorse what, my name's Fred Hoppy, sixteen hundred Stony Hill Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. I endorse what Tom said. Please vote for this resolution.
Thank you. Any, did you, anybody have any questions for Mr. Hoppy? All right. You're off the hook. Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? Anyone else present on this item? All right, seeing none, let's move on.
I'll be calling item five B, Comprehensive Plan Conformance two-two-zero-two-two. Application of the Urban Development Department to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. A proposed amendment to the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan to add the Lincoln Bold Redevelopment Project to create a twenty-two-story mixed-use building generally located at two-zero-five South Ninth Street.
Good evening, councilmembers. Hallie Salem, Urban Development Manager for the Urban Development Department, City of Lincoln, five-five-five South Tenth Street, Suite two oh five. For you today is a redevelopment plan amendment. We are the applicant for that plan amendment. And we have representatives here of the redevelopment team, Alex Carlson with Craft Development, as well as Danae Kalkowski. Before I get into the specifics of the project, I think for the benefit of some of the public, we may want to just run through how, where we are in this process, and how generally we create redevelopment projects in partnership with redevelopers. So I'll start with some tiny print and zoom in. So, a lot of times developers come to us with a project, and we, we review that project for conformance with various plans, comprehensive plan, as well as different redevelopment plans. If there's not a redevelopment plan, we look at other things in the area, and determine whether or not it fits within the goals of the city, and we look at the need for tax increment financing as well. We also have further discussion to help with the redevelopment, with the development of the project, and learn a little bit more about how maybe the project can become an even better project than it's, it started as being proposed. And we identify issues and concerns and, and help address those concerns as we go along. The next step would be, if it's determined that TIF is needed, and as we develop the project, is to prepare that redevelopment plan amendment, which is what we're here for today. And we would draft that plan amendment and cost-benefit analysis and present, and submit it to planning for review. We would notify the public that this is going out for review, and staff members would review those exhibits, as well as send it to any applicable design committees if it's at that stage. It would go to Planning Commission for public hearing, sometimes remains on consent agenda, but sometimes has a public testimony like we had with this project. And then, again, it goes through a round of legal notifications, and then it comes to City Council for introduction and public hearing and vote. As we move further down the list, we then go through a process of negotiating the redevelopment agreement. Sometimes these overlap a bit. But we go through and look at things like infrastructure and utility needs, legal drafting of the agreement, looking at the sources and uses. And we have many drafts, along with exhibits, including things like schematic elevations, project area. Potentially, we may include, in addition to the site plan, additional information about traffic studies or construction site plans. And, and I know, you all know this, but then we come back to City Council for introduction of the agreement, and go through the public hearing process and vote with that as well. Further down the road, we get into implementation, and that includes things like proof, providing proof of financing, closing on the land, reviewing schematic design, construction review, permitting with the different elements of the permit requirements, creating a, a construction traffic plan and reviewing that. There's just a variety of things that happen through this process. And the reason why I go through this process with you today is that I think there has been possibly some concern expressed about where we are in the process for this project. So we are presenting to you today a project that is approximately a two, two hundred and thirty thousand square foot mixed-use building on the site of the, of a current service station at Ninth and P Streets. And I will share with you the site. And the site is at Ninth and P, in the red. They're proposing to be a twenty-two-story building, approximately thirty-six thousand square feet of Class A commercial office space in the second through fifth floors, floors seven through fifteen, approximately seventy, seventy studio, one- and two-bedroom apartments. And floors sixteen through twenty-one will consist of approximately thirty-three one, two, and three-bedroom condominium units. The basement, sixth floor and twenty-second floor, would contain an amenity space. This project is intended to enhance, enhance a primary entry into downtown Ninth Street, and then also be an entrance into the Haymarket District. I wanted to briefly talk about the context of this project. This project, again, Ninth Street. This side, the east side of Ninth Street, is, there's proposed to be a thirteen-story residential building that is under construction right now, student housing. And that is not a redevelopment project supported with TIF. And then there is a, the Graduate Hotel, which I believe is sixteen stories on the south side of P Street. And the project has been to a number of boards, design review boards, both Urban Design Committee and Historic Preservation Committee, Commission. And I think we've seen the project change multiple times over that review process, the four-review meetings. And I'll just show you the last two of those, at the Historic Preservation Commission on October twentieth. This was the image presented to them by Leo Daley, and they took, the design, design team took the comments by that design review body into consideration. And this is the product that was presented to Urban Design Committee on November first. And the, the major change here was reflected in, in the podium of the design as a result of some of that discussion with members who wanted to talk about materiality, and a podium that reflected the three and four, four-story structures going to the west of the project, while also meeting the challenge of the design on the east face, which is reflective of more, more of a modern design. And then finally, I wanted to point out that we have also met with adjacent owners. We had a request by Jonathan Camp, one of the owners, Haymarket Square, to meet with tenants and owners for a discussion about the alley, and for two reasons. The first was needing to make some improvements to the alley, potentially looking at undergrounding of utilities or other utility improvements in that alley. And then second, disruption to the alley access and wanting to further talk about that. And so we did meet with owners on November fourteenth about that and had some good feedback. We asked them to, I think, be patient with the process and look at having a conversation in January around the time that they would be able to provide some site information, some, some additional information about the construction. And they did meet in December. Again, I was not able to attend that meeting because of another conflict, but I'm sure some of you were there and know more about that. Then, finally, I just wanted to mention, this is, the, at the end of the project, it's estimated to be valued at approximately one hundred million dollars, and could generate up to twenty-three million in TIF for the project if reimbursed over a twenty-year period. And I think that is about it. I can answer any questions, or let the development team come up.
Thank you very much, Hallie. Any questions for Ms. Salem? Councilwoman Raybold?
Hallie, could you go back to the design of the building? Is that the, the final design, the last one that you showed us, or is it still working on, in the design process?
Yes, I think it's, it's a great point to point out that this is still in the design process. This was presented at Urban Design Committee. This is not the redevelopment agreement that has schematic designs attached, so that there is a potential for some changes related to that design. But that would need, potentially need to go back to design review if it was not the final design.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right.
Yes.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Salem, can you talk a little bit more about the process you used to evaluate the necessity of TIF? In general, or specifically on this project, actually?
Sure. So, some of the things that we review when looking at the necessity of TIF is whether or not a project would be completed as shown without, without the use of TIF. And that's hard to judge at the beginning, but includes things like, would they improve, make alley improvements? Would they make other right-of-way improvements? Would they do different types of utility connections or make utility improvements? We have been having conversations about district energy and whether or not that comes to fruition. It seems like at this point that there is a desire to minimize disruption to Q Street, and maybe because of that, we're not looking at connecting to the DEC, but that's still something that is being discussed. And so when we look at all these factors together, along with facade and making energy enhancements, without or but for the use of tax increment financing, would all these enhancements be made to the building? Would all these improvements be made to the public realm? And often, those items would be cut or trimmed if we were not using TIF as a resource.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Again. Next testifier.
Good evening, members of the City Council. Danae Kalkowski, eleven twenty-eight Lincoln Mall, Suite one oh five, appearing tonight on behalf of Lincoln Bold. And also with me today is Alex Carlson from Craft Development Group, who's the developer on the project. All the principals of Lincoln Bold are Lincolnites, are, are growing businesses and their families in the City of Lincoln, so this is an important project to them. They're excited to bring forth a project that provides a vibrant, attractive, and inviting gateway into the Haymarket, and also into our city from Ninth Street. Provides new residential housing options in our urban core. Will help strengthen the city as a mixed-use center and growing and thriving environment for executives and professionals. and growing and thriving environment for executives and professionals. This project will be targeting businessmen and women living in Lincoln who would like a downtown urban residential experience that you might find in a larger city, but maybe not in Lincoln, with space that's really an active living environment with a lot of amenities to provide them a highly livable area. Besides the amenities, the proximity, excuse me, proximity of it to work and entertainment is also a huge draw. We really believe that this project would help, in fact, drive more bodies to utilize all of the great resources we have in the Haymarket and downtown Lincoln, if they're living down there. So the mix, and I think what allows a lot of that to happen is that we're mixing apartment use with the condo units, so that we have that active living environment. And it allows us to provide amenities for all of the users, I think, that make it a very attractive living environment. As Hallie mentioned, there's been a lot of work that's gone into the design of the project, both on the private side before coming in front of our public bodies and commissions to review and provide us advice and comments, but also there. We took the project to the Historic Haymarket Commission three different times, got comments, and went back and made revisions based upon comments received in front of the Urban Design Committee two different times. And as Hallie showed you, we just kept evolving and, and being able to try to address some of the comments that we received and, and then come up with a project that I think is, is very, very attractive and should be, you know, a great addition to the city of Lincoln. It was approved at the Urban Design Committee, so we would go back if we needed to make changes. And we will have to go back to show specifically the streetscape, because we didn't have the details of the streetscape at that time. And all, all of you are aware, we're working right now on that city's downtown corridors, design guidelines. And so obviously, the streetscape for this project will be following what those new design guidelines will be. So that's kind of why we're waiting, waiting on that. As far as land use, we don't need any separate land use actions for this project, you know, before zoning. So we'd be allowed to build a 275, you know, foot-high building. This one will be a little bit shorter than that because of actual FAA regulations and the flight paths, paths of airplanes coming into the city, in and out. So 254 feet high for this building. As Hallie said, our next steps really, once we get past tonight, would be to work on that redevelopment agreement. And that's where it comes down to the nitty-gritty details. Recently brought a general contractor on board, so we're working furiously with the contractor on numbers and construction details, working and meeting with the city on TIF uses and sources, including what public improvements might be included in the uses of the TIF. We will continue to meet with individual stakeholders to address their questions and concerns, particularly about the construction considerations. And probably a lot of those will be happening in January. There was a presentation made to DLA in October, and the project was, you know, well-received by DLA. As Hallie mentioned, we've also attended a neighbor meeting regarding specifically the alley. And then the Camps had a follow-up neighborhood meeting with interested folks from the Haymarket area. We attended that meeting also. A lot of concerns and questions raised at that meeting. Unfortunately, because of where we are in that process that Hallie explained, we weren't able to give them a lot of answers, because a lot of the details with respect to construction staging and, and just even specific utilizations of TIF and what might happen with that alley as far as improvements, we just don't know those answers yet until we get a little bit further along with the contractor and with the city. But our principal's committed to continuing to meet with interested stakeholders, listen to their concerns, and we'll do our very best to try to address them the best that we can. Parking will be addressed in the redevelopment agreement, but at this stage, we're anticipated to utilize the city parking garage for parking. We hope to be back in front of you, maybe February-ish, with redevelopment agreement that will outline some of these specific details. Planning Commission did unanimously approve the redevelopment plan amendment to its conformance with the comprehensive plan. I think Hallie did a great job of just explaining the project in general. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know a lot of you have questions regarding the specific site and the, the user of the site. So we do have with us tonight Mark Whitehead, the owner of the property, and I think he's prepared to talk to you a little bit about the relocation of the existing business and answer any questions you might have specifically in regard to, to the use of the property. But, Mark, you want to maybe even, that way we can hit all your questions at the end.
Certainly. My name's Mark Whitehead. I guess I'm here tonight representing 205 North Ninth LLC. I'm the single owner of Ninth and P location over there. My sisters and I, 18 months ago, or actually just 12 months ago, owned the site together. There's been some, some questions as to the current use of the property and transitioning it into this type of a use. About 16 months ago, I got a phone call from Steve Glenn, says he's going to come over and meet with you. And I said, certainly, be happy to. And so he comes on over, he says, I've got a vision. A vision of a condominium, an apartment complex, the likes of which Lincoln has never seen before. It's going to bring Lincoln into a new level of commercial development and something that has not been proposed into the city of Lincoln. And as he described all of this, I said, this is fascinating. I said, where's this project going to be? He says, it's going to be in Ninth and P Street. Well, that's funny, I've got a service station in Ninth and P Street. And so negotiations at that point, it was, it's been, I was sold that it's an intriguing project from the beginning and wanted to see what we could do to make the thing work. Nothing happens without consequences and, and certainly foremost on my mind was a relationship with the Melicar family. We've got three generations of Melicars. My father built that location back in the 60s. Bruce and I have gained, have got just about the exact same birth date, so we've grown up together in this, in this business together. So this has been an interesting project. And it took about four months of negotiation, and it was painful for me to see Bruce come to me at one of our weekly lunches and say, Mark, my son and I have come to an agreement, and he's buying my business out for me. And there's nothing I could say, because we were still in negotiations. So once we signed our contract, one of the most difficult conversations I've ever had to have was with Bruce and Jeff about the future vision of this particular site. The contract is just a piece of paper. The paper is a 30-day renewable lease that allowed me all the rights to be able to develop this project, but that's a sheet of paper. And I said, Bruce, I said, I've, I've just kind of kicked you in the teeth there with this thing, but I'd like for you to work with us. And we want to work, if you, if you would allow us to, we want to work with you to find another location to go to. And plus, there's a lot of different hoops that we're jumping through on this. Most purchase agreements, you sign it and you have full anticipation of closing. There's a lot of things we've got to go through on this. I said, if you stick with me on this process, we will work to everything we can to find another location. Again, and Jeff and Bruce have been tremendous to work with throughout this process. And, and we have signed an agreement for another location. We close on it January 1st, and, and all parties are working incredibly well together for that to happen. So we have full anticipation that for a while here, the Melicars are going to be operating two different locations. Again, this is a difficult proposition. We've been successful in the service station industry business, and that's something that nobody else, I think, in Lincoln has done. We built the last service station in Lincoln at 70th and Van Dorn Street back in the 70s. That was the last service station built in the city. And so this is a painful evolution. Our dealers are doing pretty well. We've still got a half dozen dealers, which shows our commitment to our dealers overall. But the sustainability of it is difficult when you consider the fact that there hasn't been a new one built in as long as it has been. So there's going to be situations where there's a higher and, and better use for properties around there, because frankly, they're not built. I did have a conversation with Bruce earlier today. I forwarded these comments on to Chairman, or Chairman, you're not Chairman anymore.
Not anymore.
Councilman McGinnis, but this is from Bruce that he sent to me. Mark Whitehead and I grew up together in the business with our dads. Melicars have been in business for over 50 years at Ninth and P Street. Our choice would be to stay at our location. But if that's not possible, Mark has worked very hard to find us a suitable location as a second choice. We appreciate Whitehead Oil's help as we want to continue to serve Lincoln with our family business. So again, this wasn't his choice. It's part of the reality of, I mean, every new project, something else was there before. And so it's, it's a difficult process. We're doing what we can to minimize it. We've invested a tremendous amount of money in transitioning to the, to the secondary location that they're going to go. And I think that they're frankly, that it might be even a better alternative for them than, than where they're at right now, but time will tell on that. And we're committed to their success, and they've committed, they, they have been incredibly respectful for, with us in terms of our process of trying to transition the site. I'd be happy to answer any kind of questions.
Any, excuse me, any questions, Mr. Whitehead? Yes, Councilwoman Ray Bolden.
Well, actually, they're for Danae, or maybe you can answer this. For parking on the new site, will they have any parking stalls available inside the building for the residents of the building?
No, they, but they will have a valet parking system that'll be available to all of the residents and the condominium owners.
And then where's the closest parking garage?
I think we're looking at the Marketplace Garage over on 10th Street.
It's a block away?
Parking has been contracted, so it hasn't been without preparation from that. So the, the number of stalls to accommodate the building has been contracted.
Yeah.
And, and that's going to be serviced with valet service.
It'll be part of our, yeah, it'll be part of our redevelopment agreement, but we've already had conversations with the city about the availability of it.
Other questions? All right. Yes, Councilwoman Washington?
Are you willing to say where the new location for Melicars is?
Can't do, I'd do that right now. I mean, it's, if you did some digging, you'd probably be able to figure it out. Again, all parties are working very well together.
All right. Yes, Councilman Schob.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for coming forward. I'm sure you're aware, we've gotten lots of comments from the public and lots of questions. And I think the thing that I'm concerned about or interested in right now, Ms. Salem put up a list of criteria that we're working our way through, and the public seems to think this is going to happen tomorrow afternoon sometime, and there'll be a big skyscraper over the city. Where are we in the process? This is the redevelopment agreement?
This is the redevelopment plan amendment. So just basically, you're approving it as a project that's in conformance with the comp plan and appropriate for the utilization of TIF. And it has the general parameters for TIF in the project. Then, and, and that's basically the city's document, right? Then we go to the redevelopment agreement, and that's the agreement that gets negotiated between the city and the redeveloper. That's where we spell out specifically how we're going to utilize the TIF, what public improvements are going to be completed with it, what, you know, how we're going to spend the TIF, what's going to be anticipated to be generated. We're also going to have specific design, concept plans attached to the agreement. It'll spell out all the hoops that we have to jump through in order to get a notice to proceed, in order to start construction. You know, all of those, really, all of those details to, you know, what's the, kind of the scope of the project, and are going to be negotiated over the next couple of months in that redevelopment agreement. Councilman Schob. And so part of our, our challenge at the last neighborhood meeting were, we don't have the answers to the questions yet that were being asked. We haven't worked with the contractor long enough yet to determine where the staging area is going to be for the project, what kind of street closures might be needed in order to accommodate the construction. That, what those are depend, will influence on how long the project lasts. So I mean, all of these details, we're, we're just getting started on those conversations with the contractor. And so we've committed to continuing to work with the neighbors. We've heard their concerns. I think we understand what their concerns are. Some of the concerns we heard at the meeting are just in general, part, you know, parking issues.
Parking and traffic.
Well, that's an issue in the Haymarket before this project, right? But, but obviously, we need to be sensitive to that during the construction process and how this project might impact that. But, you know, staging, closures, the alley improvements, all of those things are going to be getting a lot of conversation over the next couple of months. And so as we meet with neighbors, we're hoping to be able to try to address some of theirs, you know, one-on-one, and to have a little bit more information to share as to how we might do that. We just, we don't, we don't have it yet in, at this stage of the process. Sometimes people come to you today and they're ready to bring the redevelopment agreement to you next week. We're not there. You know, this is a big project. We're doing the redevelopment plan amendment. We've got at least a couple more months to go here before we're going to be back with the redevelopment agreement.
So we're just being asked to give you permission to keep going? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Calkowski. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other questions? Yes. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Washington, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this question is for Hallie, because it has to do with contracting for parking in the Market Street Garage. In reading through the proposal, I see that there's the possibility for another 150, 160 employees because of this project. And as I look at garage space being leased out or at least held for residents of this building, I am curious, what's the parking pressure going to be like if we have another 150 employees because of this project? And if we have, I don't know, they're probably allowed to have visitors. So, and I, I don't know, visitors get valet parking as well, or if that's accounted for. So what's the parking push we're going to have? I'm watching other buildings go up in the area, and I'm assuming that they're looking for parking as well. And tell us a little bit about the size of Market Street, how it's, how it's used today, and whether or not there's capacity in the future.
So I'll first say that we have not worked out all of those issues. We have not contracted for parking as of yet. That contract will be part of the redevelopment agreement. So as we sort out the exact number of commercial stalls needed and number of residential stalls needed, we'll be looking at, where we have been looking at is the Marketplace Garage. And, and that appears at this moment to have enough parking for the, the initial request by the Trinitas group that's developing the student housing as well as this project. So that's what has been discussed at this point and will be discussed further as we negotiate the agreement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Saying none, thank you. Anyone else present to testify on these items, these issues? Santa, come on forward.
Well, I've got to tell you, for 20 years, as I served on the City Council, this was my favorite meeting. The last meeting before Christmas, and so I'd always wear my hat. I used to have a dunce hat, it'd be up there, I was sponsored by Viagra and some other enhancers. But we'll take it off.
Welcome back, Councilman Camp.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and the members of the council. It's a privilege to be before you, and I thank you for your service. Ms. Raybold, I want to thank you for your service and wish you well in your new endeavors at the legislature. Congratulations. Got some things here for Sule to hand out, but I'm going to try to talk to you about this. Again, I'm John Camp. I started the modern Historic Haymarket.
Would you mind moving just closer to the microphone? Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Yes, I want my supporters at home to hear this, too.
You do?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't think I've ever been down at this sin before. Regardless, just for identity, native Lincolnite, born and raised here. Forty years ago in 1982. native Lincolnite, born and raised here. Forty years ago in 1982, my former wife and I and another couple started Haymarket, the modern renovation. And we ventured in, and even my own brother called me a fool. What are you going to do here? It was a difficult measure. The first three years, we had four off-street parking spots. We were paying 18% interest, and we had approximately 90% vacancy. And then in 1985, I was able to purchase a warehouse across the alley from our Haymarket Square courtyard immediately leased up. And from that point on, I learned, the real question is not location, location, location. Mr. Beck, yes, it's parking, parking, parking. And I think that's it. Ms. Washington, you also asked about the Marketplace Garage, and I'll get into that a little bit later, because that's an excellent observation. And my address, for your reference, my business address is 808 P Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, right there in the heart of the Haymarket. I've handed out to you an outline, a two-page outline. Essentially, there are three key things I want to cover, and three concerns that we have. And I said, when I say "we," I'm talking about the Haymarket District and all. And I'll address a little bit in a moment what has been said before me. But there are really three important areas that we don't know about. And we think that before you even proceed to this step, there needs to be a breath of fresh air and step back. As Ms. Salem showed you on that chart of things, this starts the redevelopment process. Yet immediately above that, you're supposed to look at the concerns, the needs, and so forth. And those haven't been fully addressed. And we feel that, number one, it deals with traffic congestion. In other words, how are you going to get into the Haymarket? You know, the access there? And what's going to happen with all these staging areas and the closure of street lanes, if not streets? Number two, parking, again, getting to that age-old parking. And it's comparing what we have now as parking, which is at a sort of an equilibrium, but it's still very, very tight. You know, the Trinitas project across Ninth Street is going to have 700 beds. And it's going to have, I believe, the representative said, 174 underground parking spaces. And yet, too, as Councilmember Washington was asking about on the Market Square Garage, it's requesting several hundred spots there. So I don't know that no matter what magic wand you wave, there isn't enough parking. But we want to know, at this point, what are the answers to the Lincoln Bold developers? And we've asked this for several months. And even as late as five days ago at our December 14th meeting, Mr. Glenn, Steve Glenn, and Mr. Carlson said, "We don't know." You know, "You've got to wait. Just kind of, we'll trust this. We'll figure it out." Well, what are the options? And we really need to know that during construction. If it's to close your streets, how many meters are going to be lost, you know, on-street parking for the customers, the consumers, the clients that come to Haymarket now? And the confusion you're going to get because of the ingress and egress? What about the parking garages that we bought in 1985 that parks 48 cars inside and additional nine outside? 57 parking spaces that we also furnished adjacent building owners, their tenants, and so forth? Depending on what the plan is in the closure of that alley, it's very likely that two to three years, that's not going to be very viable parking. So a huge loss. And finally, when you get past the construction under the parking talk, is, the parking area is, what are the long-term satisfactions of parking needs? And, you know, tell us what you think that's going to be, how that's going to be resolved. And that's a question, not only for the developers, but for urban development, which manages the parking garages. And as been alluded with some of your questions, it's significantly challenging. And our premise is, and that of the businesses and folks in Haymarket who have now developed Haymarket over 40 years, is, we had enough challenge with COVID, but what are you going to do with another two to three years of construction? Losing our patriarchy, losing parking availability? How much parking will be lost on the street that's used for customers and clients? What's going to happen to the off-street parking needs? Finally, the third element, as I said, the ingress, egress, traffic congestion, number one. Number two, parking. Number three deals with what are, or what would be a support plan you have to help the lost revenue of Haymarket businesses and property owners caused by this project? What will be ways to compensate them? At our meeting last Wednesday, five days ago, Mr. Glenn recited a situation he had in Tecumseh when he had a hardware store that was impacted by an installation of a roundabout, a simple roundabout. And I'm sure, like we do here in Lincoln, there was some access provided to the hardware store during the construction. But he mentioned his revenue was down 17%. And I think Mr. Bayer, Russ Bayer, who owns property on this block, sent a letter to you. And in that, he noted, if his tenants lost 17%, they don't, it's not even profitable. It's unprofitable for them. And that's the case of the small businesses and people who have endured the COVID and so forth. So 17%. And I say to you, that with what's going to happen to build this huge 256-story building, or 256-foot building, 22 stories, you've got to have staging room. Now, across the street of Ninth Street, Trinitas has Q Street, Ninth Street, and P Street closures. It also has the former printing plant for the General Star across to the north, across Q Street for staging. And that's not a 256-story building. That's going to be on a 75 by 142-foot parcel. So essentially, we want to understand the solutions or where this is headed before you start negotiating on a redevelopment plan and allocating that $23 million of TIF. Tell us exactly how you propose to make this work. So what we're asking you tonight is, put this on hold for at least a month. Say to your January 16th meeting of next year, that's four weeks. Let them come forward and tell us about this. You know, they pledged to have meetings with us. It wasn't until about 12 hours before our meeting on Wednesday that they consented to come. And we scheduled around their schedule. So, you know, we've tried to reach out where we feel they should be the ones reaching out to us and giving us answers, rather than saying, "Well, we'll tell you tomorrow, or next day, or next month." You know, I think, Ms. Raybold, you know, in your development of supermarkets, and so with your stores, and Mr. Beck, yes, with your real estate experience, and all of you dealing with the public on the council. Mr. McGinnis, you're another real estate guru. And these are things that really, you should have some sense of direction on it before you proceed to go ahead. And I also have to thank Ms. Raybold less. When I retired, she gave me this little plaque, her little base. And while I was on the City Council, a common phrase I used to say is, "We've got to be careful, because just this step is like putting a snowball on the Matterhorn." And Mr. Schob, you heard that too. It starts rolling down, and suddenly it's an avalanche on the Swiss village below. And I suggest to you that, right now, you're about to put a snowball in this project, and it's going to cascade down, and it could have very significant ramifications negatively on historic Haymarket. And that's the sole gem of our city. We do not want to do that. You don't want to kill the goose that laid the golden egg. So I think, again, I would just say, please, tonight, delay this measure for at least a month. Let the developers and urban development give us answers ahead of time of ideas of where they're headed. And then consider public hearing again, continue that, and then perhaps have the vote next January. But I think discussion, and of course, you've got the holidays in between. So rather than continue behind the scenes on redevelopment agreements, which has already started, let's get some answers first so we know. And then we can decide on this. So it's a good project, but does it belong here, or whatever? We just need some answers. So with that, I want to thank you for the time. I might also mention, in the notice that was published in the paper and in the agenda tonight, it's the wrong address. But I thought, oh, thank you for putting Seleni on South Ninth Street, not North. Everything you've put in the notice is South Ninth. But I'd be glad to answer any questions. I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Camp. Any questions or comments?
Thank you again. Have a very wonderful holiday season.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else present that would like to testify?
Hello. My name is Jonathan Camp. I live at 3340 Grimsby Lane in Lincoln, Nebraska. And I work at 808 P Street and down in the Haymarket. I do want to thank our City's Council for, you know, allowing our citizens, businesses, and representatives the opportunity to engage in open discussion regarding matters of our shared community interests. I've been fortunate enough to call Lincoln home for 39 years. I've lived in various locations, but the Haymarket has always been a neighborhood that I've been a part of. My father gave a little bit of background on how my parents spearheaded that development down there. And I had the fortunate ability to grow up in the district with a lot of the businesses that are still there today. I'm a neighbor, and I have a responsibility for, you know, my neighbors' well-being. I'm a property manager, and I have a responsibility to our tenants and to our properties. And I know this council understands that. You are the chosen voice of our city and our communities. Trying to decide the best course of action when there are conflicting interests is not an envious position. And so I appreciate having these opportunities to have discussions. As Hallie Salem did mention, and it's scrolling across the screen there, this is an application by urban development for, to see whether this project is in conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan and Propose Amendment. There it goes. That's what we're here tonight to discuss. And I wanted to just discuss some of the points that deal with that specifically. The, there's a summary that Urban Development has provided the council. It's on the agenda, which outlines why this project is in conformance with the master plan, the 2050 Lincoln Comprehensive Plan. You know, what principles do we look to for that guidance? How do we determine if a decision is in the best interest of those we serve? You know, I've had the opportunity over 20 years, with my father's service on the council, to understand and learn some of those procedures and processes. But today, before the council, is a second reading and public hearing regarding the Lincoln Bold Redevelopment Agreement, and whether it conforms to the Comprehensive Plan. Well, what does this mean to you, to me, our citizens and constituents? The Comprehensive Plan embodies Lincoln and Lancaster County's shared vision for the future, out to the year 2050. The Lincoln Lancaster County 2050 Comprehensive Plan is a roadmap to plan forward, not only in time, but in concept, to envision a community that is thriving, livable, equitable, innovative, and resilient. These five themes are found throughout the plan and build the long-range vision for our one community. The Comprehensive Plan goes through major review and update process every five years. The Planning Commission, which is charged by state law with developing the Comprehensive Plan, also reviews the plan regularly. For the benefit of those in the audience and those listening or watching at home, the Planning Commission is composed of nine voting members, a body of nine citizens appointed for staggering six-year terms by the mayor, with concurrence of the City Council and County Board. I wanted to point out just a few parts of the Lincoln Comprehensive Plan, as well as the Downtown Master Plan, that I think are worth just your review. Not saying that this project isn't good, not saying that this isn't a wonderful project, and would be a tremendous addition to the city. I do think so. But specifically talking to conformance with our Lincoln Comprehensive Plan and the Downtown Master Plan, I just wanted to review a couple other sections of the Master Plan, as Urban Development has similarly done for you in their summary. And this is by no means as well put together as Urban Development's, but I hope that it does allow you to at least identify and find those various sections. As stated in the Comprehensive Plan's introduction, which is called Plan Forward, that's the 2050 Comprehensive Plan, Plan Forward acknowledges the importance and interconnectedness of economic, environmental, and sociocultural domains, and the ways in which technology and public policy are applied and affect outcomes in these domains. Plan Forward, therefore, is a combination of practicality and vision, and provides guidelines for sustaining the rich mosaic that now characterizes our growing community. The core promise embedded in Plan Forward is to maintain and enhance the health, safety, and welfare of our community during times of change, to promote our ideals and values as change occurs, and to meet the needs of today without sacrificing the ability of future generations to meet their needs. Planning for sustainable change requires patience, commitment, effective collaboration, and timing, in addition to recognizing and accepting matters are not within our capacity. Plan Forward further advises on the urban environment. Lincoln's sense of community has been based on incremental, compact growth built on the foundations of established neighborhoods. Future growth will continue this traditional pattern and be linked to both the level of demand in the market and to the orderly extension of public improvements and services. The city of Lincoln's present infrastructure investment should be maximized by planning for well-designed and appropriately placed residential and commercial development in existing areas of the city with available capacity.
Time.
Preservation and renewal of historic buildings, districts, and landscapes is encouraged. Development and redevelopment should respect historical patterns, precedents, and boundaries in towns, cities, and existing neighborhoods. The Comprehensive Plan goals also recognize the importance of civic participation. The city of Lincoln and Lancaster County have long encouraged the public to participate in local government activities. Keeping people knowledgeable and involved in the implementation of the Comprehensive Plan and other community initiatives is crucial to ensuring their ultimate success. It is important to give all members of the community a voice and the capacity to influence decisions. The Comprehensive Plan goals additionally outline the importance of community appearance. The urban and rural landscapes of Lancaster County produce a distinct place, offering a sense of identity to visitors and especially to residents. It is worthwhile to plan for, protect, and strengthen this character as the community grows and matures.
That's time. Five minutes is up, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. You have the, you have your time. Yep, no worries. All right. I'll take any questions if that's still permissible.
It is.
Otherwise, you do have the rest of my notes.
Thank you for that. Are there questions for Mr. Camp or comments? All right. Thank you for the outline.
Yeah.
Appreciate you being here today.
Appreciate all your time.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, let's move on.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Councilman Beck, yes, you recognized?
Ms. Salem, may I ask a question of you by chance? Some of the concerns brought forward remind me of, and the site itself reminds me of, in some ways, the Lead Center construction site. Could you walk through that? It's, I remember driving by it. It was not something I paid close attention to, other than the barricades in the street. But could you talk about how that process was? Because the sites, in terms of their limitations, do seem somewhat similar, as well as the building size.
They are somewhat similar in terms of the footprint and the challenge of fitting a staging site near such a small footprint. The Lead Place was actually a smaller footprint, so it did encroach a little bit further out than hopefully this one will. But we, I think the other thing to point out is that this, the Lead Place, their main neighbor was our parking garage.
Right.
So we had to work with them to manage some of those issues, as well as the university museum. It was, I think this is a little bit more challenging of a site in terms of the alley itself and access within the alley. So yes, there will have to be challenges that are worked through. I think the neighbors, the business owners and property owners did a very good job of articulating what their concerns were at that November 14th meeting, and certainly gave us a laundry list of things to start looking at. And as we go forward through the agreement process, those will certainly be things we'll want to discuss.
It was doable on P Street for Lead Place. I'm assuming urban development I'm assuming Urban Development believes that this is doable here with maybe a primary construction site on Ninth?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think that, I mean, a difference here is typically you don't have a lot of parking along Ninth Street. You did have parking next to Lead Place in front of the Applebee's. So in terms of destruction of used parking stalls, I don't know that there's as much. There's just driveways at the current location. So there won't be destruction of that. Probably we'll push out into the street. We've done, there've been a number of studies through L T U in terms of what that impact would be, in terms of, are those heavily traveled lanes? And then what's the trip counts that are going on there? Again, it's still a little early in that, but we've been reassured enough to know that on the west side of Ninth Street has fewer trip counts than as you get farther across the street. So that's what I can add as far as trip counts and parking.
And I think the other challenge is going to be managing this within the timeline or time constraints of also the Trinitas Project going on. And so as that project sort of winds down and less, fewer lane closures are needed for that project, the hope is sort of Lead be adding some of those concerns to allow this project to move forward.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilwoman Washington.
I just want to acknowledge, oh, pardon me. I just want to acknowledge my thanks for you even recognizing the fact that I'm wondering where the upper limit is on lane closures, because I can only imagine that there are a number of days in a year, maybe in the fall, where having Ninth Street hemmed in on both sides would be really problematic.
Definitely. I mean, with Q Street as well, it was down to one lane for a period of time, and that was very challenging. So I think, I think there is a desire to limit the impact and try and find a way to help them, help them and adjacent owners and businesses through this process so that we can build without, you know, causing, causing harm to the local economy, because we're down to one lane on Ninth Street. I don't think that would work, so.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Schub.
Just let me add one other thing, because we've had this issue as relates to demolition of buildings and lane closures and that. L T U's not going to let things go down to just one lane. They won't allow permits to move forward. They'll control the streets so that people can move through there, and they'll make those kinds of adjustments. We've had those conversations about Eleventh Street, a bus transfer station that's had to move out in the street, and how to accommodate that, and work through those kinds of issues. And building permits are a requirement to be able to start construction and be able to do those lane closures. There is a permitting process that goes through a lot of review before you can do that.
Councilman Schub.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Marvin and Ms. Salem. I'm going to go back to my question from earlier. Where are we in the process and how far along is too far along? How do you, yeah, I think that's been the biggest concern I've heard via email from the public and here tonight was, we're going too fast? Are we going too fast?
I think we've seen redevelopment agreements come back to council anywhere, anywhere from the next week after a plan amendment to years later. And I think just even tonight is an example of sometimes, sometimes plan amendments or amendments to those plan amendments are made, and then, and then an agreement is the next week. This is not the case for this project. So we are still at the early stages of negotiating agreement and don't even have a draft agreement at this stage. So we are still working through some of these issues, sources and uses is still in the early stages, and, and discovery is part of that process.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other questions? Comments? Thank you very much. Anyone else present on this item? Do you care to close at all on this? You're good.
I thought maybe Hallie got the rebuttal. Because it was her application. So I don't think I have a lot more to add than what Hallie and Dan have kind of explained. And just, you know, the, the planning department did a great job on just going through the Comprehensive Plan and conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. And obviously, that's Planning Commission's specialty, too, and they did take a look at it. And we do meet a lot of the goals of the Comprehensive Plan with a project like this in downtown Lincoln, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for, or, all right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can we move on?
We're calling item five C, Comprehensive Plan Conformance two-two-zero-two-three, Application of the Director of Urban Development to Review Us to Conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan. I propose amendment to the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan to revise the North Haymarket Arts and Humanities Center redevelopment project to create a new Phase Three to add a North Haymarket Hotel project, generally between Eighth to Ninth and R to S Streets.
Hi, Hallie Salem, City of Lincoln Urban Development Department, five-five-five, South Tenth Street. With me today, Josh Berger with Woodbury Corporation and his team. And I feel like we're coming full circle on a project that Josh and I started working on back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. So this is eerily familiar, that we're working on this project together. I didn't realize that both of us have been in this business so long. So this is exciting to bring this back, because this project was originally called North Haymarket Arts and Humanities Center for a reason. It was originally the site of a Sheldon Annex idea. And it's been a long time since that idea has been around. It's been ten years that that lot has been sitting as a gravel lot. And so we are coming back to you with an amendment to a plan amendment that is making some adjustments for what we thought would happen back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. So we're going to be adjusting the North Haymarket Arts and Humanities Center redevelopment project to include some additional rights of way. We're going to be removing Lot Two from the original Phase Two project, and that is the Marriott Courtyard project. We're going to create the Phase Three project, which is the North Haymarket Hotel redevelopment project, and then replace the original project proposed description for Lot Two with that Phase Three. So I'm going to show you on a project map exactly what I'm talking about here. So in February of two thousand and seven, we established this block as a project with the first phase, the sawmill building. And then, and that project came to you in August of two thousand and seven for approval. And then in two thousand and eight, we came back to you with approval for a project, the Marriott Courtyard. And, and then that was later amended after the economy took a slight downturn, later amended in two thousand and eleven, and then that project was completed. And so now we're proposing this site be redeveloped, the North Haymarket Arts and Humanities Mixed Use, or, excuse me, Hotel Redevelopment Project. And that proposes the redevelopment of this gravel parking lot on Lot Two of the Arts and Humanities Edition for the construction of a new six-story, one-hundred-and-twenty-two-room Extended Stay Hotel. And this is the current site with the parking lot there and the Marriott Courtyard. And this is what has been proposed to be constructed. This was presented to Historic Preservation Commission on September twenty-second of this year, and later approved five-zero by Urban Design Committee on October fourth of this year. Then the project went to Planning Commission November sixteenth, and that was approved, found to be in conformance six-zero. And I think it meets, crosses off a lot of the boxes that we check when we're looking at conformance with the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan. It supports the Entertainment District, downtown, and historic Haymarket. And for the Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, it supports infill and redevelopment, Plan Forward Element Two, as well as Policy Five Downtown, which calls for continuing to make Greater Downtown a major focus for mixed-use reuse, infill, and redevelopment. And the proposed project is approximately a twenty-nine million dollar investment and includes up to a four-point-five-five million dollar TIF in financing if we use the twenty-year repayment period. Any questions? Or I can ask the developer to come up.
Any questions from Ms. Salem? Councilwoman Washington?
I'd like to just bring up parking again and recognize that the parking garage that's most closely located gets really full very quickly. And I'm just very curious to hear how that's going to play out here.
So the parking garage that we're looking at for this project is the Haymarket Garage, similar to what the Marriott Courtyard is using now. Wayne has looked at the parking garage for availability, and it would be available for the additional stalls being requested. I think, again, this is just the plan amendment, so we'll be working out the terms of the redevelopment agreement. But, you know, we are facing a challenge while we are not intending to build any additional garages beyond Gold Four that we just built in West Haymarket. In this specific area, there is capacity over in the JPA garages. So we, the discussion has been ongoing for a number of years about how to make the best use of garages in and around the area. And, for example, students from the Trinitas Eight-N Project were moved from the Blue Three to the Gold Four Garage. And there, there is the ability to move folks around that would be closer or provide them a lower rate than if they were closer. And there are challenges that I think we need to address, that we are an ongoing discussion with how to get people to and from those garages if they're a little bit further away.
Thank you.
Other questions?
All right. Seeing none. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm sorry. Good evening.
Not yet, not yet.
Soon it will be.
Good evening. My name is Ann Post. I'm an attorney with Rumble Ludkey Law Firm, and I am privileged to be here on behalf of the developer tonight, the Woodbury Corporation. As Ms. Salem has, she has given you a lot of the details of this project, where it is contemplating a six-story, one-hundred-and-twenty-two-room Extended Stay Hotel. So while there has been hotel development in and around the Haymarket area, this fills a market niche for that extended stay that otherwise is really missing from the area. And so this project also presents some unique opportunities in that the group that is proposing this project is affiliated with the Marriott Courtyard next door. So that provides opportunities for that shared courtyard space, and also to make sure that there's the harmonious construction, as harmonious as possible, construction process. So with that, I will be here to answer any other questions that you have, but otherwise I will turn it over to Mr. Berger to give you more details.
Good evening. Good evening. Josh Berger with Woodbury Corporation. Thank you for your time this evening. Along with me is Aaron Stent. He's our general manager for the courtyard down in the Haymarket. So we've worked together for a long time. Oh, I didn't realize how long that was. Makes me feel a little old. But, so, just a couple of things. You know, Woodbury owns and operates about sixteen hotels. We have about four hundred development, two of which are in Nebraska. So we're excited to be back in Lincoln, working on another project. And we've always sort of called the courtyard our orphan hotel. And so we're happy to have a new project going up next to the courtyard. And this is about two years of underwriting and due diligence. So this is not gone, this is, we're not doing this in a, in a way where we're running fast. So we've spent a lot of time doing the financial analysis, the market study, the underwriting, all of the things that it takes to make the project viable from our, from our standpoint. Woodbury, just a little bit of background, Woodbury's a one-hundred-and-four-year-old family-owned operation, been in business for a long time. And so, you know, typically, we're pretty conservative on what we do to make sure things that make sense. So we spent a lot of time thinking about the aesthetics of the building. We're sensitive to the Haymarket. We tried to, we tried to do things that were pleasing to, to fit in, but yet look a little different than the courtyard. And so we're, we're really happy to be back part of the project. It really will help maximize operational efficiencies between the two hotels. We think that there's, there's demand there with this type of product. And Aaron can talk a little bit about the Extended Stay brand itself. But we're really excited about the project, happy to be back in Lincoln. We think it's a, it's a great piece. It's really under realized. It's, you know, the gravel parking lot today, and in two years, it'll be a thirty-million-dollar asset to the city. So with that, you want to maybe mention a little bit about the hotel brand itself?
Yeah. Good evening, Council. Residence Inn is just a power brand for Marriott. It's definitely one of their most recognizable Extended Stays Hotels in the entire market. There's, there's nothing like that in downtown Lincoln. There's, there's no Extended Stay that offers kitchenettes and dishes, pots and pans, you know, to be able to really provide for the guests for an Extended Stay. We have a lot of needs, just being the general manager of the courtyard by Marriott Hotel. We have a lot of guests that stay at our hotel, that stay with us for weeks or months or even possibly years. And there's a lot of hotels that do the same thing in the Haymarket and in the downtown vicinity. We do have excellent Extended Stay properties in Lincoln, but they're somewhat on the outskirts of Lincoln and nothing downtown, and there's a big need for that in the Haymarket. So just, just a great, like I said, a power brand, following the Marriott flag, and very well-known brand, and just excited about this project for what it can bring to Lincoln and the future growth of Lincoln. And, you know, part of the Comprehensive Plan is there's development projects in Lincoln, possibility of a convention center, there's a need for more hotel rooms. This is a great brand to bring into Lincoln, especially the downtown area. So I'll answer any questions if you guys have any.
And I want to touch on one thing on parking. So, you know, Woodbury, we operate in about eighteen states across the country, intermountain west, generally speaking. And I'll tell you, Woodbury uses Lincoln as a, as a test case, an example of how to work parking, how to make parking work in downtown. So this is, you know, a testament to, to urban development and Dan's leadership and Wayne's leadership. I mean, we've had, we've actually asked for, to take calls with, with the urban development to talk about how they do parking, why they do it, what makes it work. So it is complex. It's always, you know, living here in the Midwest, it's always going to be a need that we have to manage through. But again, But, again, with all the sophistication that Woodbury has to offer, we really use Lincoln as a, as the benchmark for how to, how to make parking work in downtown. So I just want to put that on the table from outsider coming in. So again, any questions that we can answer?
Questions for Mr. Berger, Berger or Mr. Stet? Yes, Councilman McInnis.
Thank you, Mr. Berger, for coming down. Quick question on the site plan itself.
Yeah.
And the deciding on what to do with some of the lanes of traffic around the building. Has that been finalized or is that something that we will come forward at a later date or?
Great question. We're working through that with Hallie and her team. We don't have perfect line of sight of what that is. Again, it's part of that, you know, we're balancing kind of operational needs that we have and managing traffic flow of the block and then the pedestrian influence on, on those decisions. So it's a fluid discussion. Nothing's been decided yet.
Okay. Kind of a personal, that's my way to get out of the Haymarket quickly.
Good to know.
So don't close it down. Plus, I also noticed that's where a lot of university students come up that street.
Yeah.
And then cut around to go under.
Yeah.
Other questions? None yet. I will just say, I think it's an exciting project. You may or may not remember, but I was around at the time of the Sawmill project and Mr. Berger was my landlord when I was in the Sawmill. And I guess the first question we had was about parking.
I believe it was.
We've been a little busy since then and I'm so pleased to serve with, Aaron Stitt serves on the Visitors Promotion Committee, so thanks for your service there as well. But if there's no further questions at this time, we will take a ten-minute, we're at the two-hour mark for council, so we'll take a ten-minute break, come back and take additional testimony at that time. So please don't leave. We'll reconvene at seven forty-five. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We are taking testimony now on our last item. And I'll, Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to carry us on.
We just ended presentation on Item Five C. Is there anyone here in the public that would like to testify on Item Five C?
Anyone else on Item Five C? We've had opening on that and, all right. Okay. Seeing none, please, let's move on, Madam Clerk.
I'll be calling Item Five D, miscellaneous two-two-zero-one-three, application of the Director of Urban Development to declare the Van Dorn Redevelopment Area Number Two, generally located at Tenth Street, Van Dorn to Calvert, and High Street, Tenth to West, of Thirteenth Street to Blight and Substandard.
Hi again. Hallie Salem, Urban Development, Department five-five-five, South Tenth Street. So the city had received requests, several requests from the Indian Village Neighborhood Association to build a pedestrian bicycle crossing to Van Dorn Park. That got us thinking a little bit about it. And in our review of the existing redevelopment plan, Van Dorn Redevelopment Plan, we realized we did not have sufficient right-of-way included in that redevelopment plan in order to build a connection. So we had a conversation with Hannah Kealan Associates, hired them to conduct, let's see if I can zoom out, hired them to conduct a blight study, blight and substandard determination study. The report was completed October of 2022. It encompasses about nine acres, which is primarily right-of-way along Tenth Street and a portion of right-of-way on High Street. So it's this orange area. The yellow is the existing Van Dorn Redevelopment Area Number One. So the orange area, Number Two, is the area that we are bringing to you today. There was a strong presence of blight and substandardness identified in that determination study. For example, under blight, average age of structures, eighty-six years. Seventy-five percent of the structures were identified as deteriorating, lack of sidewalks running through the redevelopment area, and aging utilities, strong presence of substandard conditions, including irregularly shaped parcels and distinct owners, as well as a lack of sidewalks and signaled pedestrian crossings. So what we are doing is starting this process, this, again, this, we're at the very beginning, the Blights and Substandard Determination Study. We'd come back to you with a redevelopment plan and that, and a plan amendment. No agreement in this specific project, but we think it would be just utilizing existing but we think it would be just utilizing existing resources within the redevelopment area. And we can tell you more about that when we get to that redevelopment plan stage. The funding will have to be looking at funding being able to be generated from existing projects or future projects in the area.
Questions for Ms. Salem? Comments?
Good, thank you very much.
Anyone else present to testify on this item? Anyone else present on this item? Seeing none, let's move on.
I'll be calling item 5E, a resolution declaring the official intent of the City of Lincoln, Nebraska, to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds in an aggregated principal amount not to exceed $24 million to finance the construction and acquisition of a multifamily housing facility located in the City of Lincoln, Nebraska.
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555, South 10th Street. And I'll be kind of brief here. We do have a representative of Anex have flown in, but I'm, I'm told that they don't have to come up in the, but what you have before you is an intent resolution. Mike Rogers from Gilmore Bell can speak to what an intent resolution is, but what I can tell you, the project consists of is 187 affordable residential housing units on or around 8th and K Street. They did go to Urban Design Committee with a rendering. There's an article in the paper earlier about this particular project, and it covers the whole block in this area. They are also a recipient of ARPA dollars. When we made our application for ARPA funding for the Pershing Block and our other application that we had, this was also a recipient of ARPA funds on this project. So, I will let Mike speak to what an intent resolution is as it pertains to city government and what we are lending to them.
All right, thank you. Mike Rogers with Gilmore Bell, office address at 2120 South 72nd Street in Omaha, Nebraska, Suite 1000. So, before you today is an intent resolution declaring the city's intent to issue bonds for the benefit of this for-profit housing development. The, the intent resolution does not bind the city to serve as conduit issuer under the conduit issuance statutes that the city has used a couple of times over the past 12 months for similar affordable housing projects. It is a requirement for the developers to submit an application to the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority for volume cap to issue tax-exempt bonds for this project. So, it is a preliminary step, an indication that the city would be willing to serve in this role if the developer were able to obtain volume cap from the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority through their competitive process for tax credits and volume cap to issue tax-exempt bonds. So, this would signal the, the city council's intent to issue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $24 million for construction of up to a 187-unit affordable housing project. And any further question with respect to issuance of bonds would have to come back in front of the city council with a bond ordinance, and I will stop there and see if there are any questions.
Which would not likely happen until well into 2023.
Right. The, the deadline NIFA would impose for issuance of the bonds, I would expect, would be similar to past years, which is December 20th of 2023. So, yeah, and it usually takes quite a bit of time during the course of a calendar year after people find out whether they've been awarded volume cap to get their project set for, for closing on a financing.
Questions for either Director Marvin? Yes, Councilman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple of questions about the project in general. You say 187 units-ish affordable housing. Can you tell me what the mix is of affordable? I'm assuming it's not all the same income.
Generally, they, they try to meet an average. I think David could speak to this, but I'll test my, my knowledge on this, and that is that the, they try to seek an average income that's 60% AMI, but then there's a bracket above and below that.
Yeah, that's correct, and it's David Western with the Anex Group, the developer on the project. We would aim to meet a, and are required to meet, an average of 60%. That final mix is not necessarily determined yet and is finalized by a market study. Our assumption on this one is primarily the units would be at 60% AMI. We are required by NIFA to be at a 10% discount to market rent for all of those units, which we would at a 60% AMI level, and also, we do what's considered a capture rate analysis, which basically looks at all of the AMI levels in what's considered our market area, and they tell us if it's, it's an appropriate mix for the area, both by NIFA standards as well as our market study provider standards. So, those are kind of the hurdles that we go through in, in that regard, but the, the aim would be primarily a 60% AMI project.
Thank you.
Councilman McGinnis?
Ah, yeah, I have a question for Mr. Rogers. Since he had to drive all the way down from Omaha at a high rate of speed, right?
It was slow, it was slow, slow going on the interstate.
Is it right now? Okay.
Well, earlier it was, yeah.
Learned a lot, but you said this is just, all this is, is an intent. Does that mean that NIFA will kind of take us out of our position as the issuer or as a governing body? Or is this something we stay in and NIFA then takes over as the operating entity of the bonds?
That's a good, that's a good question. This is, no, the, the, the city would really, the city's being asked if it would serve as conduit issuer, which means you issue bonds for the benefit of the, of the developer with no pecuniary liability on the city at all, meaning there's no taxpayer exposure. It's really to function as the governmental issuer so that the, the project owner can access tax-exempt financing. NIFA can serve in that role itself. The developer closed on Union at Middle Creek with the city serving in the role of issuer last year, and they would like to use the city again in the role of conduit issuer. Some developers use NIFA as the issuer, some prefer to use the city. It's kind of a preference. It has happened that a developer has asked the city to serve in the role of conduit issuer and then switched to NIFA, but that was more a function of timing of the project and when it was, would be able to close.
Okay.
We had that experience with a, a current project that wasn't going to be able to close in 2022, and that NIFA does have an ability to carry that, that approved debt over into the next year. City uniquely had that last year. We're not going to be taking advantage of that in the future. So, that carryover will be issued by NIFA. So, I think originally, there was an assumption that the city would be issuing that. That's going to lapse back to NIFA, and then they'll, they'll be issuing that debt probably in January or February of next year.
So, the project will still get done. It's just a question of who's.
Who the issuer would be. Likely it'll be NIFA on that one.
Any further questions? Comments? Councilman Shoup?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Rogers, would you say again, Mr. McGinnis' question talked about the liability of the city. Would you go over that one more time for me, please?
Sure. So, in Nebraska, there is the Industrial Development Revenue Act, which has been used since the 1950s or 60s for cities and counties to issue bonds for the benefit of private entities. Can be manufacturing facilities. That's the more traditional type of, of facility in the distant past, but more recently, it would be nonprofit entities like Nebraska Wesleyan University is an example of, of an institution that the city has helped with tax-exempt financings, but also, under those statutes, the city can do it for a housing project like this, an affordable housing project. Those statutes make it clear that the city, when it's, when it does issue bonds for the benefit of those borrowers, has no liability at all, and there have been hundreds of these financings done under these statutes over those many decades. And it, the bond purchasers, the people who buy the bonds and loan the money for the project, understand that there is no taxpayer who's going to step up, and there's no governing body from the city council is not going to step in to help make payments. It's really the sole responsibility of the owner of the project, the developer, or the Anex Group in this case, to repay the loan that, that comes from a lender or whoever the purchaser of the bonds is.
Thank you. I'd like to, if I may, Madam Chair. Mr. Marvin, I want to switch over just a little bit to TIF for a second. This sounds very similar to the explanation I give people about TIF. When I say that the city is not really borrowing any money, there's someone else.
That's, well, that is true. It becomes, a developer purchased TIF as a, as a loan that's made generally to a local bank, and then it is the obligation of that developer that is using TIF. And if there's a shortfall in the, in the taxes that are generated to pay down that debt, then the developer is generally on the hook because the bank's not going to want to make a loan to somebody that they go, they're going to get stuck holding the bag. So, there is usually a backstop of the developer providing an assurance that the loan will get paid off in the event that the tax revenues are insufficient to be able to do that.
In both cases, the city is not obligated, and the tax payment base for the community is not obligated.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Good. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other testifiers on this issue? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, let's move on.
I'll be calling items 5F and 5G together. 5F, approving the 300 South 16th Redevelopment Agreement between the City and Akquisition LLC relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 300 South 16th Street and adjacent rights-of-way in downtown Lincoln. And the related amending the fiscal year 2022-23 CIP to authorize and appropriate $308,164 in TIF funds for the 300 South 16th redevelopment project.
Getting my workout in. Hallie Salem, Urban Development, Department 555, South 10th Street. Seth and Luke Flowerday are here, and they can speak further about the project. This is now the agreement phase. So, we've gone through the redevelopment plan process with you and bringing forward a redevelopment agreement and CIP amendment that would allow for property generally located at 300 South 16th Street to be used, or, excuse me, allow 308,164,000 in TIF generated from the redevelopment of the property to be used for acquisition and improvements related to the project. The developer intends to invest approximately 1.288 million to acquire, redevelop, and rehabilitate the over 100-year-old building at 300 South 16th Street and into approximately 22 rent-restricted units. And so, they are asking for the 308,000 to be paid for over approximately 20 years due to their rent restriction, that they'll make 50% or more of the units affordable to those earning 60% or less of the area median income, and those in excess of that would then be affordable to those earning 100% or less of the area median income. This is another affordable housing project before you today. We have five housing projects before you today, which is really exciting. Four of them are in the downtown. Four of them have some element of affordability with it today. So, we're excited to be able to present a variety of large and small. This is a little bit smaller redevelopment, but again, part of this goal of creating and preserving affordable quality housing in the downtown. You approved this plan amendment back November 21st, and they have been to Historic Preservation Commission, working with them through the details of maintaining this historic building, not necessarily designated, but again, it's an important contributor to this capital district. This is the project area. What this is, the building site. And the uses of TIF will generally be for site acquisition, historic enhancements, and energy efficiency. Those add up to well over the $308,000 in TIF available for the project. So, we'll work with them to make sure everything is done, and we're, I think some are sad to see the green going away.
No way. That was a nice.
But I'm not, so, and I think, I think Historic Preservation Commission was very excited to see the windows would, will be improved, the courtyard improved, balconies, tuck pointing, and other improvements to this historic building. And with that, are there any questions?
Any questions? Comments? All right. Thank you again. Welcome back.
Thanks. Good evening, council members. Thanks for being here on a cold and kind of icy night. So, Seth Flowerday, 8227, South Cherrywood Drive.
Luke Flowerday, 5430, Rose Barre Court.
So, we just thought we'd kind of do a brief overview of the project, kind of refresher. Hallie covered a lot of it, but we got a 22-unit apartment building, 13,000 square feet, looking at doing 50% of the units, 60% AMI, affordable housing. The rest of them, you know, the, the total rent range, there's a lot of efficiencies and one bedrooms, so we're looking at about 650 to around 800 for the rents. And then just doing a renovation of the property, focusing on affordable housing, the energy efficiency, as well as maintaining sort of the historic character of the building.
Very good. Any questions? Comments? Councilman Shoup?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gentlemen, Ms. Salem said the number of units, and I didn't write it down. Would you say that again?
Twenty-two.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
We actually found, it might be 23.
There was another one hidden in there. As we were been opening doors and things like that.
For in Tenshams, it's 22.
It's a very small, it's a very small dwelling unit, so we're, we're kind of looking into ways to maybe add that to an existing one. 22 is our, right.
Yeah, I know.
That's, yeah. 22 points, there's a remainder.
People ask if we find stuff behind the walls. Sometimes it's like, well, we did find an apartment once.
Does that count? Yeah, so, the goal, the target goal is 22 units, so, it was a little strange, though.
And growing, yeah.
And growing.
If you tell us, you'll have to kill us, right?
Nothing like that. No, it's not that serious.
Not that good. Okay, very good. Any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you again. Very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Good luck.
All right. Any other persons here to testify on this issue? Anyone else on this item? Okay, seeing none, let's move on.
I'll be calling items 5H and 5I together. Approving the Pershing Block Phase 1 redevelopment project redevelopment agreement between Mural and Nebraska LLC and the city relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at Block 63, located between M Street and N Street, and between S, or, I'm sorry, and between South 16th Street and Centennial Mall in downtown Lincoln and adjacent rights-of-way in downtown Lincoln. And the related fiscal year 22-23 CIP to authorize and appropriate $2,327,452 in TIF funds for the Pershing Block Phase 1 redevelopment project.
Good evening, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555, South 10th Street. Before I get into, one of the things that I was, we were talking about plan amendments and doing plan amendments, and then when does redevelopment plan come forward? This plan amendment was in 2021. It is almost 2023. So, I don't want people to get the impression that these things always move quick. Sometimes they move at different speeds. This is a difficult project. It is a huge building. It is a building that is unsafe to walk into because there's asbestos in it, because there's a hole in the roof, and there's a lot of water in the building. And it is potentially a public-private partnership where 60% of the block could And it is potentially a public-private partnership where 60% of the block could be a future downtown city library, and it's moving at its own speed and its own pace. And then there are the financing and stacking of financing to be able to build different projects. So it creates a lot of dialogue about a lot of different issues. But the first phase here is a project that would go before NIFA, and the reason we are here today is a redevelopment agreement on Phase One so that the applicant can then take the redevelopment agreement to an application to NIFA so that they can build 93 affordable housing units on the Pershing site, basically on the portion of the block that abuts 16th Street running north and south. They'll also build 17,000 square feet of commercial space on the first floor along that area. The project is an $11.8 million investment, $9 million privately financed, $2.3 million in tax increment financing. For the size and scale of what they're doing, it's a smaller amount. There's a conundrum on TIF and affordable housing. Because in the state of Nebraska, we don't want to charge large property taxes on affordable housing units because they're rent restricted. So they use an income approach. That income approach creates a smaller increment. But in terms of creating a capital stack to make projects work, it's an important piece of the puzzle. We have identified sources and uses for this particular project. Come up here in a second. And the sources is the 2.3 million. These are the general areas that we think that the TIF can go to. And the eligible expenses exceed much of this. So it can drop to different buckets, I suppose. But the project area, here's a kind of a map of that. This is 16th Street. We'd be talking about this area that runs north and south. There's a future development phase. I think that that's gotten a lot of discussion. I know the developers here. I think I won't table that, certainly answer any questions about that. But I think that they would be best to get in, get into that discussion about Phase Two or parcel number two. There's some renderings. The challenges on property that is on Centennial Mall. There are also opportunities, but a challenge is the height limit on Centennial Mall is 57 feet. We don't build a lot of buildings at 57 feet, and I think there's an inefficiency element of building to a lower height. If you have to put an elevator in a building, wouldn't it be nice if that elevator could go up another floor because you've already spent that? If you're doing a podium building, you can go four stories above the podium. But, and, and that would be able to maximize your building. But in that environment, you can't go above the 57 feet. So this building is at this elevation because of height limitations on Centennial Mall. It also has to go through another review body. A lot of times, Hallie said that the previous project went through historic preservation. The skinny skyscraper that you were talking about went through both urban design and historic preservation. This is a different review body. This is the Capitol Environments, and they have a higher standard for materials and review, which this building will meet. But that obviously creates an additional cost as well. So there are challenges on Centennial Mall for projects like this, and I think all of these things that we've been working through and that I've been talking about have been, you know, an explanation for why more of the elongated, we brought you a plan amendment in 2021. We're bringing you a redevelopment agreement at the end of 2022. The other issue that is a recent issue, and that is because we had a project here that provided affordable housing, when Yermsstedt was in here a month ago or six weeks ago and said, we need to rush to get our application in. This was one of the properties that we applied for. What did we apply for? We applied for demolition dollars on this site so that we could take the building down. And ARPA funds from the state of Nebraska were awarded on this site, and they were awarded because we are building 93 affordable housing units. In our application, we made the case that you can't tear down 20% of a building or 40% of a building. Said it's all or nothing. And the state agreed with our application and said, it's all or nothing. You were awarded $2.5 million to take this building down in an effort to be able to create the 93 affordable housing units. What has that done on the 60% side, which was the city of Lincoln's side? That has relieved us as of a cost for demolition. It has also relieved the developer of a cost that they were going to do because prior to our application, the concept that we were working under was that the developer would cover 40% of the demolition costs and we would cover 60%. This grant application through ARPA has relieved us of that cost, but we don't actually know what the building's going to cost to demolish. We don't have a bid for it. We have estimates for it. I think anybody that's been in construction the last six months knows that estimates are sometimes right and sometimes they're woefully wrong. So if they are wrong, then there will be a split between the developer at 40% of, of a cost if it was exceeding the $2.5 million. And that will be borne by the developer, and then the balance would be borne by the city on its 60% parcel that it's retaining. I can throw a lot more information at you, but I might just stop there and then open it up for questions and then give the developer an opportunity to walk through their project as well.
Questions for Director Marvin? Councilwoman Raybold.
Could you please talk a little bit about the parking?
Parking.
Plans.
So the parking plan is long ago at various iterations, there's a big basement in the Pershing building. So a lot of the dirt's been dug out so that you already have an area where you could park cars. But if you've ever looked at that building, it's, it's, it is not on the property line. The building is inset. So there is an opportunity to create parking underneath the building, which the developer, I think, has an interest in doing. But we also own a parking garage called the Eagle Garage. And some people say, well, why do you call it the Eagle Garage? Because there's no eagle on the top of the building anymore. Nevertheless, it's just stuck with that name. And the Eagle Garage has capacity a block away, and we would be able to provide parking in the Eagle Garage for those patrons that are looking for parking on a, on a monthly basis.
Other questions or comments for Director Marvin? Thank you. You're next from our developers. Thank you, Director Marvin.
Jay Klein, representing White Lotus Group, 10404 Essex Court, Suite 100, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to come and present this, this evening, members of the council. Dan did an excellent job of describing some of the primary aspects of the development on the Pershing Block Mural. Really, we're just very grateful to be part of a very unique process. This is an opportunity that is maybe rather unusual in our state when it comes to affordable housing, where it could be true public-private partnership participation between the city of Lincoln, the state of Nebraska, and private development. So we're very honored to be a part of this process. We're very excited about the opportunity to, to be working in Lincoln with the community. And if you have any questions for us, we're here to answer them.
Any questions? Any comments? All right. Thank you for being here tonight. Very much appreciated. Anyone else care to testify on this item? These items. All right. Seeing none, we can move on.
I'll be calling item five J, establishing the annual salary of the mayor for the years 2023 through 2027.
Good evening. Barb McIntyre, 575 South 10th Street. And I'm here to talk about this resolution. It's brought forward every four years before the election. It sets the annual salary and benefits for the mayor of Lincoln. The resolution sets forth that the salary shall be adjusted by the U.S. Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers not to exceed 5% a year. Each succeeding year after that, the mayor alter term shall be adjusted in a like manner. It also establishes the benefits. That includes the retirement, health plan, insurance, PEP, dental. The current salary today is $94,528.72. And the next increase will be in May of 2023.
Any questions for Director McIntyre? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yeah, you say there's a CPI adjustment every year? And that's the way it's always been for the mayor's salary?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not to exceed 5%.
Not to exceed 5%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then I read this wrong. Okay. And is, and the salary now is, it wasn't in the resolution anywhere, what their salary is? Okay. And we're also, are we adding? Kind of look like we are adding a 6% retirement bonus?
That's the contribution to the 401A retirement, and that's always been set forth. I don't think it's an add.
Been in there?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. So we're not amending anything else?
It's exactly the same resolution that was approved four years ago. There was no changes to it. Yeah.
Any other questions for Director McIntyre? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Director. And we actually will have an amendment at the voting session, which is a cleanup amendment. Councilman McGinnis?
On this one?
It's, yeah, it's a typo. It says 2018 salary and it should say 2022, but. Thank you. Okay.
Some read side of South Folsom Street and South.
Seconded by Raybold.
Yes.
Washington's building generally located at two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Email.
We hope that could not.
I'll go to that with, you know, to public so important and call the vote.
This amendment to the link.
Or safe connection for the neighborhood to the park. I know how much Indian Village really appreciates Van Dorn Park, and it is hard to get to safely. And so thank you for being super creative.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further, Councilman Shob?
I'm going to piggyback on her comments. I spent last Tuesday night at the South Creek Neighborhood Association meeting, and there was a lot of enthusiasm there about crossing, crossing 9th Street, I think it is. No. Yes, 10th Street. 10th Street. Thank you. And they were excited to see that this was going to happen and really wanted to see what you planned to do. So, thank you.
Yes, Councilman McGinnis.
I think the real person we really need to thank here on this one would be Jonathan Cook. Because he's the one that set this up a while back. Yeah. Well, I have a long memory.
He just left. And Jonathan Camp just left. I think. Anyway, thank you, Councilman McGinnis. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five E, a resolution declaring the official intent of the city of Lincoln, Nebraska to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds in an aggregated principal amount not to exceed $24 million to finance the construction and acquisition of a multifamily housing facility located in the city of Lincoln, Nebraska. Introduced by McGinnis.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none. Yes.
Oh, no.
No, you're good? Okay. All right. Please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five F, approving the 300 South 16th redevelopment agreement between the city and Allin Acquisition LLC relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 300 South 16th Street and adjacent rights of way in downtown Lincoln. Introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Raybold. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five G, amending the fiscal year 2022-2023 CIP to authorize and appropriate $308,164 in TIF funds for the 300 South 16th redevelopment project. Introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion?
I'd like to know if the Flowerday brothers would be interested in sponsoring a contest for us to select the next shade of color for that.
Not to be green. And not that shade of green. Oh, there we go. Now we're, now things are looking up. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five H, approving the Pershing Block Phase One redevelopment project redevelopment agreement between Mural and Nebraska LLC and the city relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at block 63, located between M Street and N Street and between South 16th Street and Centennial Mall in downtown Lincoln and the adjacent rights of way in downtown Lincoln. Introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Raybold. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five I, amending the fiscal year 2022-23 CIP to authorize and appropriate $2,327,452 in TIF funds for the Pershing Block Phase One redevelopment project. Introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item five J, establishing the annual salary of the mayor for the years 2023 through 2027. Introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Councilwoman Beck, or Bowers, you are recognized.
I just have a cleanup typo to clear up. On page two, line one, first word, it says 2018 salary, and I'm making a motion to amend it so it says 2022 salary.
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, let's, please call the vote on the amendment.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Back to the original ordinance, bill?
Main motion, Raybold?
Resolution.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. That concludes section five of our agenda. We shall now move on to section six, Public Hearing Ordances, Second Reading and Related Resolutions. Item six A is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Pershing Block Phase One redevelopment project in the amount not to exceed $2,327,452.
She was ready for six B.
Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. The reason this is where it is, is this is an ordinance, it's a three-reading item. It's connected to the items earlier, and we didn't want to ask the council to go out of order and, and amend your own rules because the resolution was really what is needed as an application to NIFA. But I don't know that we need to go in tonight to go over how this is connected to the other items, but I wanted to say that.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that? Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, please move us on.
I'll be calling item six B, approving amendment number one to construction and ground lease agreement for Lincoln Children's Zoo between the city and Lincoln Children's Zoo to construct additional parking lot.
That sounds like something I can talk about. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Okay, good, long evening. Thank you, Council. My name is Denise Pierce and I'm with the Lincoln Parks and Rec Department. I'm here with my colleague, JJ Yost, along with Assistant City Attorney Jocelyn Golden. And we're here to present today on this amendment number one to the construction and ground lease agreement for the Lincoln Children's Zoo. Our partners with the zoo are also here this evening and can assist with any questions. By, briefly, by way of background, at the end of 2016, the city and the Lincoln Children's Zoo entered into two long-term agreements with the city, a construction and ground lease as well as an operating agreement. These are those agreements that allowed the zoo to expand north of A Street. And then as a part of that transaction, JJ is going to show you, the zoo also purchased a lot just south of A Street for additional parking. There you go. So after the expansion, the zoo reported its attendance increased even beyond their projections, resulting in a parking demand in the area that exceeded their capacity on their peak days. The zoo also anecdotally reported some of their guests parking in the neighborhood or just turning away if they couldn't find a parking spot. So in 2019 or so, the zoo started discussions with the city about additional overflow parking. And we looked to the area that JJ is going to show you right now. It's city-owned property. I think we'll flip it around there. There you go. So it's just north, just north of our public gardens facility. It's just south of the Water Park Condominium Association. And then it's to the east of the trail there. And this is an area, there used to be a water reservoir there for Lincoln Water System. So around the same time that the zoo approached the city about additional parking, our staff in Parks and Rec were also reporting increased parking demands for Antelope Park. I know you've all been there. We've got a lot of amenities at Antelope Park, from the Band Shell to the Veterans Memorial Garden, to Ald, to the playground. We also have a number of special events at Ald, like walks that are dedicated to a particular cause. And that creates some additional parking pressure, resulting sometimes in folks parking in green, green areas that then create some maintenance challenges for our team. So given some of these challenges that we were aware of and some of our parking challenges, we thought this was a good opportunity to partner with the zoo to create some additional parking, not just for the zoo, but also for these other needs in the Antelope Park area. So Parks and Rec staff worked real closely with the zoo team on designing the new parking lot. And the proposal actually made it as far as the Parks and Rec Advisory Board back in 2020. And then COVID hit and the plans were shelved. Couple months ago, the zoo reached out again and they reported that their attendance had rebounded post-COVID. And they'd also identified new funding streams for the parking lot. So we dusted out the plans, got together again, looked at them, made some changes. The zoo team also reached out to the board of the Water Park Condominium Association. They held a neighborhood meeting at the zoo in November to walk through the plans, discuss neighborhood concerns. And then park staff also took the project to the pedestrian bicycle advisory committee. That group was involved in the zoo expansion project back in the 2015-16 timeframe. So those changes led, or those discussions led to some changes in the agreement. And JJ is going to talk specifically about the amendment and the construction plans in a moment. Just a couple of things about process. This, what you have in front of you today is going to amend that 2016 construction and ground lease. And it's going to amend the lease to add this area here to the original lease and then also allow the zoo to construct that parking lot. The term of that original lease is 50 years. We're not changing that term. We're not modifying that term in any way. So with the amendment, the city is going to continue to own that land. And then the zoo will be responsible for constructing the parking lot and then also maintaining it once it's constructed. And again, the lot, once it's construction, constructed, will also be available for other uses. With that, I will turn it over to JJ.
All right, thank you. So the construction plan for the project is exhibit G in the agreement, or in the amendment. The first few sections under paragraph six G of the amendment include the general language about the design and the construction of the new lot. We anticipate the new lot will contain about 164 new parking stalls. That will include six accessible spots. And then there will be language about the shared use. And for a, for trailhead parking, visitors to Antelope Park, public garden staff, and of course zoo usage. The zoo walkway will be the eight-foot-wide parallel path that will run along the Rock Island Trail, along the east side of the Rock Island Trail. There'll be about eight feet of green separation between the, the trail itself and the walkway. We anticipate doing some landscaping in that separation. That was a, some, an idea that came out of some discussions with the neighborhood. There are a lot of utilities, buried water lines in that area. So landscaping, we'll have to work around buried utilities. But we think we can do some, some things in that green space just to help promote that separation. And then the walkway and the trail come together at A Street and will use the existing crossing on A Street to, to get to the north side or to the zoo side of A Street. Let's see, the zoo will be required to install signage that will direct guests onto the walkway and avoid conflicts with the trail. And then we anticipate that there will be a little bit of a trailhead with a kiosk and a potentially even a shaded structure or shelter at that area to promote that, that usage and to direct people for the separation between, kind of through trail traffic and the zoo pedestrians. Entrance to the lot will come off of eight, or off of Memorial Drive, kind of at the northeast corner of the, of the lot. And that will also provide access into our public maintenance garden, or maintenance yard as well. A fence will be along the north side of the, the parking lot. And then that fence, at the request of the apartments, at the Water Tower Apartments, that fence will turn and go parallel to the walkway, along the east side of the walkway, north towards A Street. To the east of Memorial Drive, the zoo will be responsible for constructing a sidewalk. The sidewalk will start essentially at that drive or entrance point. It will cross Memorial Drive with a raised platform. And then it will extend over to the Antelope Park amenities. The zoo is responsible for building the, this sidewalk. And then the Parks and Recreation Department will take over maintenance. There is a landscaping plan that we have developed and will work in cooperation with the zoo to, to add screening, screening, excuse me, along the, the parking lot and the islands. What else there? Let's see, there are a few other items about, I mentioned the fence. There's a gravel parking lot on the west side of the parking lot, an existing gravel parking lot that will be paved as part of this project. And might mention that because this was, you might be aware that this was a former water reservoir area. And as a result of that, there will be some language in the agreement or there is some language in the amendment about the protection of the, of the Lincoln Water Systems, buried lines through this area and just some extra caution that needs to be made when constructing in this area. I might also mention the traffic calming items associated with Memorial Drive. I mentioned the, the raised pathway for the sidewalk crossing. We're also narrowing the curb line at the intersection of, of Memorial Drive just to the, to the south where Denise is pointing there. Just as a traffic calming measure, that's kind of a, a cut-through traffic point. And we think we can make that a little safer by narrowing up that intersection, making it more of a T-intersection approach.
Okay.
With that, I'll turn it back to you, Denise.
Yeah. So the zoo would like to start construction on the new lot yet this spring, or coming up this spring. And just a couple notes in closing, I want to thank Jocelyn for all her work on the agreement. I want to thank our partners at the Lincoln Children's Zoo. We have CEO Evan is here, President Emeritus John Chabo is here, and then COO Sarah Wood is here. I know COVID threw a wrench in their plans and we really appreciated their flexibility to reengage the, the neighborhood as we went, got back to this project. So with that, we are happy to try to answer any questions that you have.
Questions? From the Council Councilwoman, Washington?
Thank you. Have you given any consideration to permeable parking?
That's probably more a question for the zoo. I think at this time, they've designed it as a pretty traditional concrete parking lot with, with certainly bio swales and, and green islands. But I don't know that they've looked at, at permeable pavement.
Okay. And if I look at the plan that you've got there, just to the south side of the parking lot, is that the greenhouse? Or a greenhouse? Sorry.
Oh, hidden.
I'm looking at exhibit G.
Are you looking at this?
Yes.
So, that's the placeholder, if you will, for a future greenhouse. We have a, a, an existing greenhouse a little bit further south of there. This is a placeholder, if we're able to expand in the future, for growing the annuals for sunken gardens.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Looking forward to it. I, for one, am grateful that there's a parking issue that can be resolved today. We're all working on it. It's all in progress, that's right. Okay. Madam Clerk, can we please move on?
I'll be calling items...
Oh, I'm sorry?
Oh, excuse me.
Yes.
Good evening. Brian Behrens, I'm the president and treasurer of the Water Park Owners Association at 2901 A Street. The council should be in receipt of a letter that was sent on November 27th. If you don't have a copy, I'd be happy to provide to the clerk. The historic Water Park Building is about to be surrounded by parking lots as the zoo continues its expansion. Antelope Park events grow in popularity and traffic increases on our extensive trail system. The Water Park has had three primary concerns with this project. One, the safety of zoo patrons. Two, the protection of our property and our vehicles. And three, the reduction in green space around our building. I had the opportunity to meet with Parks and Rec and the Lincoln Children's Zoo. And all parties were receptive to our concerns and verbal agreements were reached and just now discussed. First, the project will include a fence extending from the corner of the LES substation to the west and then back to the north at A Street along the proposed zoo sidewalk. Further, this would be aesthetically pleasing, matching the current zoo fence along A Street. This fence will provide both the safety to those using the new lot and also improve the protection of our property. Second, Parks and Rec has assured me that every effort will be made to replace the tree canopy and other shrubbery to restore, at least as much as possible, the existing park feel to the remaining space around the Water Park Building. In light of and due to the tremendous cooperation with the other parties, the Water Park Owners Association is in support of the construction of this new parking lot. And I want to thank the council for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for your testimony. Are there questions for, or testifying?
Thank you for coming down.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support of the project.
Anyone else? Present? Okay. Very good. Madam Clerk, can you please move us on?
I'll be calling items six C through six H together. Six C is annexation 22003, application of Tribudo LLC to annex approximately 109.79 acres, more or less on property generally located at North 70th Street and Arbor Road. The related change of zone 22005 to change from AG Agriculture District to I2 Industrial Park District on property generally located at North 70th Street and Arbor Road. And the related conditional zoning and annexation agreement between the city and Lancaster Logistics Hub LLC for the property generally located adjacent to the south side of Arbor Road from North 63rd to North 68th Street. As well as approving the Lincoln Logistics Redevelopment Agreement between the city and Lancaster Logistics Hub LLC, doing business as Lincoln Logistics Hub, relating to the redevelopment of property generally located adjacent to the south side of Arbor Road from North 63rd to North 68th Street. And the related fiscal year 2223 CIP to authorize and appropriate $13,492,680 in tax increment financing for the Lincoln Logistics Redevelopment Project. And finally, also the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Lincoln Logistics Redevelopment Project in the amount not to exceed $13,492,680.
Good evening, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. And this is my last item before you. So I want to take the, the personal privilege to wish you all Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. So a little history on this project comes up. This was, this was a plan amendment to a redevelopment plan up on 56 and Arbor Road back in, if you'll notice, March of 2022. So we're following up with the redevelopment agreement. Since we had those discussions, I just want people to understand there's spacing between some of these things as we work out some of the details. Where's the location that we're talking about? It's this area. I think a lot of people know where 56th Street is. A lot of people know where 70th Street is. The interstate, Arbor Road is, I don't think it's, I don't think it's probably the half-mile south of the interstate. We've done a couple of other redevelopment projects up in this area. I think Camping World, which was not a redevelopment project up there. But Central Lumber was a redevelopment project that we did on the north side. This is a much larger area. And with all the different things that we've had before you, I don't want to lose sight. This is an exciting project because it's a new type of development in Lincoln. And it provides opportunity to do some good things for the community as well. The building, it's a black and white picture, I should have done it in color. But the building has gone through urban design review. It is not a metal quonset. It has a higher level of finish that will look in that area that is typically what I would consider to be above a standard that you would normally see for just a warehouse building. But the goal here is a three-phase project. The three-phase project will put in Phase One, which I think they're ready to go right away. The developer will be able to give you a timeline on all this, with a follow-on on a Phase Two and a Phase Three. Each additional phase will add hundreds of thousands of additional warehouse space and will provide opportunities. Long ago, when I ran for legislature, I learned that warehouses may not have a lot of jobs in them. But there's a lot of delivery people that are paid well to deliver all the packages and boxes and, and material that's inside those buildings. So this will create an opportunity to shorten some of the travel times for some of that, the material that's in those warehouses and will also provide employment opportunities for people who do that, to do that work. The sources and uses, zoom into it. The check mark here is there's a lot of site preparation that is going on, on this site. Uses a considerable amount of the TIF. The project itself will have over $60 million in private development. And if I zoom out a little bit, the multiple phases, what we're doing is in first phase, there's a considerable amount of site. And each additional phase that comes on will not have as much TIF going into that. What we talked to the developer about, and they were agreeable to, were in subsequent phases, what we have in Arbor Road is a county standard road that really needs to be upgraded and brought up to the standard of Lincoln streets. So not only will the project pay arterial street impact fees, it will also contribute in subsequent phases, a contribution towards the upgrade of Arbor Road. There's time constraints on that. But as we start thinking about how we build out on the edge of the community, I think TIF can play a role in that as a contribution towards arterial street improvements through the impact fees that we collect and through Lincoln on the Move dollars. And I think that that combination together, just like in the interiors, we build out affordable housing and we talk about stacking dollars to be able to complete projects. affordable housing, and we talk about stacking dollars to be able to complete projects, I think TIF can play a role out on the edge as well. So we're testing that out with this project as well. I know Danae is here, and Arun would like to talk about his project as well. So let me stop at that point and open it up for questions.
Questions for Director Marvin. All right. Saying none, we'll move on to Danae Kalkowski.
Danae Kalkowski, Secrescent Kalkowski Law Firm, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 105. And with me today, Arun.
Arun Agarwal, White Lotus Group, 10404 Essex Court, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114.
We have both, not only the redevelopment plan and the land use, or, excuse me, the redevelopment components, we also have three land use components going along with our applications tonight. I'm going to let Arun maybe just give you a big overview of the project and why it's bringing something new and exciting to Lincoln, and then I'll talk to you maybe just specifically about the land use components, because Dan's done a really good job, I think, on the redevelopment agreement, so.
I'm going to go very, very quickly. I know it's very, very late for everybody here, so thank you for taking the time to go through this. And, you know, just sitting here over the last few hours and reading over all the really inspiring projects on the housing side, this is a unique one apparently for today about the job creation side of our economy. And so this particular asset class probably represents one of the more significant and fastest-growing segments of our economy. In particular, during the pandemic, it was highly associated with the last mile distribution. Pandemic caused a massive influx of us utilizing online sources for our products and goods, and we needed to build warehouse capacity for those suppliers to provide that to our homes or businesses. Today, the economy has shifted, and now, given the challenges on a more macro international level, we're talking about domestication of our supply chain. So although the solutions or the purpose is entirely different, the use and the development provides a similar strategy. Lincoln, like a lot of our state, has a dearth of this type of asset class. I think, Rich, you might know better, or Tom, you might know better, but I think we're a sub-2% vacancy in this type of asset class. So the challenge in our economy is that we, in particular in Lincoln, as in other places throughout our state, is that this type of product hasn't been built enough. And we found a site that has good access, of course, to the interstate system. And Dan, I know that we had haggled back and forth on the TIF allocation, the $2 million that we're happy to contribute. Of course, we want that road to improve so that those trucks and workers can move in and out of the space well. But on top of that is approximately $1 million and a half in impact fees that will also be available to improve that road. So you're right, and one of the things that Dan had mentioned, I do wish that that image was in color because we're really aiming to develop what is a first-class facility. We just recently completed, we're in the midst of completing approximately a million square feet of a very similar product, and it's been very well received from global employers in our state. So I'm here to answer any questions, and thank you again.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Beckius.
Is that a tilt-up product?
Yeah, so this is a rendering of a precast. Precast, whether we end up delivering the asset in tilt-up or precast, it would be a concrete reinforced product.
Thank you.
Of course.
Other questions? Comments?
Let's hit, can I hit the land use just real quick, because there may be a comment or two from the public with respect to that. So we have three land use items for you today. One is an annexation request. And so the area in orange is the annexation request for our project, and the area that's also within all of these lines is the area that the planning department added to our annexation request to include some additional property beyond our property. And the reason you can see is, if you look at all the white around, when, once we annex ours, it leaves these pieces virtually surrounded by annexed property. So we're requesting it for our property, planning expanded it to include a larger area. We also have an annexation agreement that goes along with the annexation, and really the only improvements that we're addressing there are the road improvements at our access points, that in the short term, we'd be adding the turn lanes at those access points on Arbor Road. The other land use action we have then is really the change of zone for just the first phase of the project, so we're not including the entire area. We'll do the zoning as we work through the phases. I think really Dan hit pretty much all of the details on the redevelopment agreement, so I guess unless you have additional questions.
Any further questions for the applicant or for Ms. Kalkowski? Okay.
No.
All right.
Just say thank you for building this project.
Yeah.
It's much needed.
Yeah, great, great project, great need. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thanks for waiting. Okay. All right. Anyone else here to testify on this item?
I got.
Mr. Halverson? Oh, yes.
I got one quick question for Dan, too, after they testify. Yeah, come on in.
Okay. Mr. Halverson?
Yeah, look at those pictures. They sure did look blighted and substandard. I mean, it looked like those buildings were falling apart. In fact, I think I saw green fields there. I suppose you can blight a green field if you want to, but an unemployment rate? Yeah, I'm sure they have a high unemployment rate in that area, too. And originally, that's what TIF was set up, to remove blighted, unset, you know, substandard buildings. And in places with low unemployment, boost unemployment, which in this case is going to be neither. And plus, the developer himself said, there's a need for this building. This building is sorely needed. So why should we subsidize a building they say is needed, which they will probably build anyway? I know you can't make them swear, they won't go forward with this, but to me, it looks like this project's going forward with or without TIF, and so I don't see a need for TIF. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, did the county blight this area before we annexed it? Before, well, you're going to annex it. Do you know if the county blighted this area? Because I thought that was one of the standards, too, that there had to be blighted before you could issue TIF. And they had asked for a blight today, so that's my next question, too. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halverson. Anyone else present to testify on this item? All right. Yes.
I got a quick question for Director Marvin.
All right. Thank you.
Just briefly going through the redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement is only for that parcel, which is the warehouse? Parcel 1, yes. Okay. So if the others, the other two parcels that you, the planning department, is wanting to annex, is not part of the redevelopment agreement, so they could protest their taxes and do whatever they need? Oh, yeah. The people who, other than the owners of the White Lotus Group ownership, is signing a not protest number, but the other parcels are not involved with that. Okay. And the history on when this was declared blighted, I have to go back and look, but this was identified and approved as a blighted area, I'm guessing, you know, over 15 years ago. So it would have met the legal standard for blight at that time. There would have been a previous council that would have identified it as blighted and approved it as blighted. I think there is some back and forth as far as blighting outside the city limits. I think there's more heartburn in redevelopment plans that would be outside the city limits, and we've tried to practice by keeping them redevelopment plans that are within the city limits, but in areas where it's likely to be annexed in at some point in the future and it's within the three-mile limit, I think we have, we're more comfortable with that. But I let Tim speak and tell me I'm wrong, but he seems to be okay with that, too.
He's tired.
He's going to agree to anything.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Director Marvin, before you leave, you started, you approached the microphone and said something that I didn't quite catch. And it wasn't about blight, I think it was about annexation and not going to protest. So could you say that one more time? Because there's two other parcels, there are two other landowners, right?
Right. So normally, when we do a redevelopment plan, the property brothers, they have a building, they're going to build a building, they're going to say, my building is going to generate, it's going to go on the tax rolls at $1 million. And we build into that agreement, well, if it's going to be $1 million, we don't want to see you coming down here and saying, I really don't think my building's worth $1 million, I want to protest it down, because that, you know, undermines the whole process of what we're talking about, of what the increment is supposed to be. So we don't want, now, we're not guaranteeing that that parcel will go to $1 million, but if all the math that we're working through supports a TIF allocation that assumes that the value will go to $1 million, we don't expect the developer to be protesting a value down below that, because that kind of undermines the whole financial scheme that we've got set up here then.
And I didn't see that there was opposition to this proposal, and I am now curious about the adjacent landowners.
Well, what we had in the Planning Commission meeting in March was, Mr. Cusick was in the back there, and he did come to the microphone, and he didn't this time, and that's fine, I'm not asking him to come up, but I can paraphrase, that some of the adjacent properties that are being annexed in, because they are completely surrounded by city, face many of the other issues that you would have if a property was completely surrounded, how do I access it, roads, services, and those sorts of things. This particular parcel that Mr. Cusick was speaking to, I think, was likely to remain fairly natural in its state. It wasn't pursuing, you know, development. And it could have county's rules and regulations that might allow the use of firearms in that area that, within the city limits, would prohibit the use of that. So there was, you know, an understanding that those changes were going to occur to that particular property. And that was what came up in the Planning Commission item. And I hope I've characterized that accurately.
Thank you.
You got a thumbs up from Mr. Cusick.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Councilman McGinnis, did you have something else to say?
No.
Okay.
Again, thank you for your service to the city, and I'll stick around. Am I going to not see you again? Are you trying to sneak out the back, or what?
You don't want to stay for the votarama? Okay.
Votarama. There's multiple votes, okay.
Yeah, exactly. All right. Okay. Anyone else want to testify on this issue? All right. Saying none. Madam Clerk, can you please move us on?
That concludes Section 6 of our public hearing, ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions. We shall now move on to Section 7, ordinances, third reading, and related resolutions. Item 7A, approving the lease agreement between the City of Lincoln and Grace Lutheran Church for the lease of space by AG Partners for its senior center program at 2225 Washington Street from December 1, 2022, through August 31 of 2024, introduced by Bowers.
So moved?
Seconded.
Seconded by McGinnis. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7B is amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classification are assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by N, by changing the pay range from Class 5338 Dental Assistant from N03 to N13, introduced by Bowers.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7C is amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Chapter 2.76, Personnel Systems by adding a new section, Number 2.76.402, entitled "City Protected Family Leave," to add job-protected family leave for city employees for the birth, adoption, placement, or bonding of a child for both parents if they are employed with the city, introduced by Bowers.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Beckius.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7D, an ordinance amending authorizing and providing for the issuance of small-issue tax allocation bonds to provide for a repayment term to up to 20 years and to increase the interest rate to a value not to exceed the 10-year Treasury Constant Rate at the time of issuance plus 100 basis points, introduced by Bowers.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded by Raybold. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Raybold.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7E is amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 5.52.050, maximum number of shared mobility device permits and shared mobility devices permitted, maximum speed, geographical areas of use to provide that the director may issue up to three shared mobility device permits authorizing deployment of shared mobility devices at any one time, introduced by Bowers.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7F, change of zone 08057D, application of BLIXT locally grown to amend the university place plan unit development to allow for an indoor theater with associated waivers on property generally located at 2626 North 48th Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved?
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Schob.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7G, adopting the revised flood and water quality protection manual, introduced by Bowers.
So moved?
Second.
Councilman Beckius, you are recognized.
I would like to make a motion to delay Items 7G through 7L until January 9, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Raybold. Further discussion? Yes, Councilman Beckius.
Flood protection updates are complex and challenging, and we are not yet where we need to be. I was hoping to present a package of amendments to bring forward tonight, but again, we're not quite there. I will continue to work with my colleagues to bring forward a singular package of amendments on January 9 that comes as close to a consensus as we can get. There will be a lot more give and take from all community members, but I do believe we are close, and I apologize for the delay in front of us today. I just want to take another quick moment to thank the city, the coalition, environmentalists, housing and neighborhood organizations that have all contacted us to share their thoughts on these flood protection updates. We hear you. We hear you all equally, and I think you are all helping to shape what I believe will be an outstanding set of updates to our communities' flood protections. We will work to find a community-wide solution that addresses safety adequately.
Thank you, Councilman Beckius. Councilwoman Raybold.
Well, first of all, I do want to thank Councilmember Beckius and Councilwoman Washington working tirelessly with all parties to come up with a resolution and to work through some of the stumbling blocks and issues that were impediments. And I really do commend you all for putting forth a great effort at trying to come up with resolutions on many issues. I have to tell you, when I saw what appeared before us in our agenda, I stared at it in complete shock and disbelief. I looked at this motion, and 24 motions to amend in its entirety, that tells me it's not ready for primetime. And so it's here before us in primetime, but it needs some... And so it's here before us in primetime, but it needs some more work, it needs to come together, and I'm a little disappointed. I had hoped that we would have reached a number of compromises and solutions so that we could move this package forward, but it does need more, more work and more effort on all parties to get it right, because something like this is really complicated, and I really commend my colleagues for being patient with me and explaining to me all the intricacies, but it's not clear. It's not clear to a lot of people, the direction that we're going. So again, I want to thank everybody for their participation, and the best is yet to come, and I know the parties are gonna engage and work on making it clearer to all parties.
Anyone else? Thank you, Councilwoman Raybold. Anyone else like to speak on this? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you. I really, I'm gonna reiterate what Councilman Beckus said. I want to thank everyone who's participated so far. For some folks, it's been years, for some, it's been, you know, a year, for some, it's been months, but I know that everyone who has added their voice to this conversation does so sincerely and with a real strong desire to see our community make a good decision about how to protect life, how to protect property, how to build a more resilient community for Lincoln, a stronger community when it comes to floodplain protection. So bear with us, we're gonna do our best going forward to come up with an understandable, clear package of amendments that makes sense, and we'll have a Happy New Year.
Any further comments? Anyone else? All right. Okay. Given that, we have a motion and a second before us to delay until January 9. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
I just, clarification, delay all Items 7G through 7L, correct, till January 9? Vote only?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Without continued public hearing, correct, Councilwoman?
Correct.
Yes, that's correct, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Washington.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Beckius.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
All right.
Okay. That concludes Section 7 of our agenda. Section 8, Resolutions First Reading, Items 8A through 8I. Section 9, Ordinances First Reading and Related Resolutions, Item 9A through 9E. Pending list are Items 10A through 10C.
Okay, tonight, we do have open-mic night. We do have public comment. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on any issue that's not been on the agenda? Mr. Starita.
Thank you. I just got a text message from my wife saying, where are you?
I got the same one.
Yeah, I figured I wasn't alone.
The phone television as to where you are.
That would be reason to, yeah.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Jesse Starita, 3900 South 32nd Place here in Lincoln, 68502. Just want to make it totally clear that I'm speaking on my own behalf, just as a private citizen, and really came down here, I thought, with the spirit of the holiday, and in particular, just to thank Councilwoman Raybold for just seven excellent years of service. And there's a quote that I often refer to when I'm talking about, thinking about gratitude, and it's from the Italian film director Roberto Benigni. If anybody's seen Life is Beautiful, you may remember that movie. And he says, try to remember here. This is why I wrote it down. "It's a sign of mediocrity to demonstrate gratitude with moderation." And I love that quote, and so I'm just gonna give my, my attempt at above-average gratitude to Councilwoman Raybold tonight. So, before I knew Jane, I saw her just as the lady who walked her small dog along the sidewalk in front of our home in Indian Village. Before I knew Jane as a friend, I saw her as a neighbor, as we talked, the type of small talk that makes neighbors neighbors. Before I got to know Jane a little bit better, I got to know her husband, Pepe, and then I got to hear a lot and learn a lot more about her family. For those of you who know Pepe, you'll understand that.
Yes.
Before I came to know Jane as a dedicated public servant, I saw her as someone who cared about conservation, as many of us do. And before I knew it, we had the opportunity to work together with a broad coalition to help our community recycle thousands of pounds of cardboard a year, something I'm still very proud of. Before I knew Jane as audacious, I saw her launch her campaign for the United States Senate as a Democrat in Nebraska, from the sidewalk of the original Russes at 18th and Washington. Before I knew Jane as courageous, I saw her as a beacon in some of the darkest hours of the pandemic. Before I knew it, I saw Jane packing her bags to move a few blocks east to sow the seeds of the common good for our state, the way she has for our city. We'll hold you to that. And finally, before I knew Jane as a state senator, before any of us did, we saw how she got there, and we saw how she earned it. So with that, thank you, Councilwoman Raybold, and I think it almost is Christmas at this point, so Merry Christmas.
Might be. Thank you. What a great tribute, Jesse. Thank you so much. I think that deserves a round of applause.
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming before us, I move we adjourn, and I want to wish a Merry Christmas to everyone, and to everyone, a good night.
Thank you, Jane.
Moved and seconded. That we adjourn.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Senator-elect?
Jane Raybold. We are adjourned.
Oh, wait, last vote.
Wait, wait, wait.
I gotta call a vote.
Vote on it.
Oh. A little anxious, aren't I?
Crack it out for another five minutes.
I missed who seconded.
Not went overs.
Do you adjourn?
Seconded by, or, Washington.
Thank you. Please call the vote on adjournment.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Oh, yeah.
Motion carried 7-0.
Now we are adjourned.